Okay, so we're ready to go?
I think we're ready to go, yes.
Okay. So let's call this meeting to order. Okay, Suzanne, you have your flag ready for the pledge of allegiance?
I have my flag, yes.
All rise, face the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, republic, which is one nation, ended in this liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
The roll call. Chairman Freeland?
Here.
John Cornelius?
I saw him.
Okay. I saw him before. Oh, there he is. John, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, no, I'm John Cornelius.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, there was another little thing I had to click. I just.
That's okay. Mordecai Grinberger? Mordecai? I haven't seen him. Do you want me to call him?
I don't see him.
Russell Hawk?
Here.
Morris Friedman?
Here.
If you'd like, I can mute myself and try to call him.
I'm calling him.
Oh, you are? Thank you.
Oh, I'm here, Suzanne.
No, I know you're there. We're looking for Mordecai.
I'm trying to find Lou. Where is he? He's not in his attic.
There he is. He's on somewhere on the top. It's very hard to see so many people on the little laptop at home compared to the big screen that works.
Yes, it is.
It's very different. Okay. Our first application.
Do you want to approve the minutes first?
Oh, we got to do the minutes. I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay, here comes Mordecai. I'm going to let him in now. Chairman. Okay, he's coming on right now.
Okay.
Okay, and for the record, we have Mordecai Grinberger on, correct?
Yes, hi everyone.
Hi, Mordecai. How are you?
Hi.
Okay.
Okay, I haven't seen you, but I guess you're here. But yeah, okay.
I have.
The minutes from December 23rd, 2021, does everyone have?
Yeah.
I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 23rd, 2021.
Okay. I need, Morris Friedman and Russell Hawk have to abstain because they weren't at the last meeting. So, Mordecai and can you?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. All right, and then our first application is the continued public hearing from Prime Pro Management LLC, 194 Route 59 reinstatement of gas station. It's an amended site plan. And I believe we have the applicant's engineer, Rachel Barison, attorney, Ira Emanuel, and I believe the applicant and some representatives are also on as well.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members. Ira Emanuel, Emanuel Law PC in the city. I'm the attorney for the applicant. If you're ready to go, I can start off with a presentation.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Suzanne, is it possible for me to share the screen?
Yes, let me just give you the permission. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hopefully you can all see that. So we were here in October with the plan that you see now on the screen. This is a rehabilitation of the existing gas station on Route 59 next to the, well, it's not Sterling Bank. It used to be Providence Bank, just east of Brookside Avenue. It was a gas station for many, many years, as most of you know. It was shut down for a long time. Our client came in, received permission to pull out the old tanks and put in new tanks. And then it was discovered that they didn't have the full permission to operate the gas station. We made an application, and this is an application, to simply operate the gas station aspect of it, to sell motor fuels. No other sales, no potato chips, no motor oil, no Gatorade or anything like that. Simply to sell gasoline as an initial step while they figure out what else they can do with the remainder of the building. This building, the pumps are in this location here. It's where the pumps always have been. There is a concrete garage building that has three bays plus an office area. And then there is this other one-story block building that used to be a convenience store. All of the electronics that control the gas pumps are in this building here. When we were here back in October, we presented this plan, excuse me, in September, we presented this plan, which included two parking spaces over on the side here. We received a lot of comment back from the board, from the fire department, from your consultants, that they were very concerned about these spaces because they would prevent any kind of access to the rear. We went back to the drawing board as a result, and we came up with this plan. Whoops. Sorry, trying to get it. Why am I not? I have it all queued up. It's this plan. There we are. Okay. We came up with this plan, and this plan kind of looks like it doesn't have any parking spaces. But what we realized was that we had these three indoor bays. And I spoke with Mr. Zumo, the building inspector, and asked him whether or not he would be, whether or not he would consider those three indoor bays to be parking spaces, and he said that he would. And so now we have a situation where we're presenting this, where we have these three indoor bays that currently exist, the block building, the gas tanks where they are. And we now have free and clear access to the rear of the property for emergency services and for any other purposes. So these three indoor bays can be used for parking. One of them would be assigned to the attendant who is required to be at the station. Most likely, it would be the leftmost bay because there is, there's a lift in there. And we would rather have the attendant go in and out of there on a daily basis and understand that the lift is there rather than have any patrons going in and out. There are four fueling stations. And although those don't count as parking spaces under the zoning code, effectively, they are. There's really no need for anybody to actually park on the site other than the attendant because there's nothing else to buy other than the fuel that is being dispensed at these fueling stations. The one of the things that came up in Ms. Minestra's memo was whether or not there would be enough room to get in and out of the bays. This is the photograph from Google Street Views that accompanied my supplemental affidavit, my supplemental narrative. And you can see that there is clear access from the apron into the bays. Now, this is a pretty ugly building. One of the nice things we can tell you is that the building has been painted. It's been cleaned up. The doors have been replaced. It looks a heck of a lot better than it did when we were back with you in October. Does it still need some work? Yes, probably does, but we'll wait on that until we get further down the line and we're able to go to the architectural review board and get their input. So that's where we are this evening. What we would like, this is a type-two action, so there's no environmental review that is required. We've already received the GML review from the county planning department. We don't need any overrides with respect to that. And so what we would like this evening is a referral to the ZBA because there are numerous variances that we need. So if we get a referral to the ZBA, we can go over there, hopefully get the variances, and then be able to come back and provide all of the additional information that was required, or requested, rather, by your consultants and that may be requested by the board. So with that, we'll try to respond to your questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so are the consultants, I'd like to turn to them. Valerie?
Sure. Yes, hello. So I think, as Ira mentioned, it looks like clearly the applicant has reviewed our comments. I think in this particular application is ready to move forward to the ZBA at this point for further review. And then we can, when it comes back, we can look at some of the other minor site plan issues that I've raised in my memo. But one of the things in particular that I think would be helpful to this board is just some of the dimensions, especially the internal traffic lanes, if those could be enumerated on the plan itself. And then a couple other things in terms of signage and lighting and landscaping. While right now it seems like the applicant is not proposing any new lighting, signage, or landscaping, I would highly recommend bringing some of those details back when you come back from the ZBA, specifically because I think to some extent, traffic circulation is going to need some sort of signage as well as parking. And then lighting, I would assume there is going to be lighting for sure on this site that's probably going to be added to the site itself. So that would be helpful as well.
We don't have any problem with that. When we come back from, assuming we get out of the ZBA with the variances that we need, and when we come back, we'll provide all of those details.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thanks. Who's our engineer? This is Eve, right?
No, it's John on behalf of Fusco Engineering.
Okay.
How are you? Good evening. So pretty much the same with us. We have a number of comments. I think we could defer until after they go to the ZBA to get the appropriate variances. So two comments I would like to make quickly. One is there was a soils test report that was prepared. We haven't received that, and we'd like to get a copy of it so that we could review that. And then traditionally, for a proposed site plan within a state highway, we'd like to see sidewalks be installed, at least along the frontage of the property. And so we would like the applicant to look into that down the road, perhaps after the zoning board of appeals. The rest of these comments are relatively minor. There's no point in wasting any time going over them. We can deal with them later.
John, Suzanne, I did forward the soil test late this afternoon. When I received it, you may not have looked at it yet. But they did send it.
I did not, but I will, I will, I will tomorrow.
Okay.
We caught that when we were reviewing for the meeting. We did have it. Apologize for not sending it sooner.
No problem.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, there is one issue that does need to be resolved when we go to the ZBA. This was brought up in Ms. Minestra's memorandum, and that is whether or not we need an additional parking space under the zoning code for the office area. We don't believe that that's the case because the office area is simply accessory to the principal use and the way in which your zoning code is set up. It requires parking spaces for principal uses in office, which clearly this is not. I don't have clear notes on it. I thought that this had been discussed at CDRC, but I won't swear to it, and I certainly am not going to put any words into Mr. Zumo's mouth behind this.
Right, but isn't it possible that that's going to change depending on what you're going to do with the existing buildings that for now you don't, you're not proposing uses for?
Potentially, but in order to, in order to use these buildings for anything other than selling gas, we have to come back to this board anyway. So, you know, when we talk about an office, let's also be realistic here. It's, it's, it's it's a place for an attendant to sit, you know, out of the elements, and if necessary to, you know, go and attend to the electronics for the guests, for the fuel pumps. It's not an office where people will be coming in and out for any reason.
So Ira, I'm not necessarily disagreeing with you on the concept. Our memo just sort of points out, and again, this is up to the building inspector to make the final determination. But in the zoning chapter, it specifically identifies office requiring one space per 200 square feet of floor area. However, an office is not listed as an accessory use within the zoning chapter. So that's why we're raising this as a potential issue. And if it needs to be dealt with before you go to the ZBA, that it would just be good to make sure that the record is complete so that when you come back, it doesn't become an issue. Or instead of calling it an office, is it something, you know, associated with the gas station itself that, you know, we would interpret it, and maybe it's not a filling station in an office, but it's part of the filling station. So we're just kind of raising that issue.
Okay, we called it an office because we couldn't come up with a different term. It's really, as I said, a place for the attendant to be and stay out of the elements and be able to access the electronics for the fuel pumps. If you want to call it a fuel, you know, a fuel pump service area or an attendant waiting area or some other terminology, that's fine with us. If, on the other hand, you say that we do in fact need one more parking space under the code, that's fine too, but we need to get this resolved before we make our application to the ZBA.
Okay, Lou? What say you?
Were you there?
Yes, how are you doing?
Good.
I'm assuming this is the one-story block building that we're talking about that's currently being or was being renovated to be used as a deli?
That's correct.
It's not a very big building, and I thought we allocated a parking space for the attendant already anyway.
We do, but we're talking about calculating the number of parking spaces that would be required under the zoning code.
Right, I understand that, but it's not technically, it is a function of the gas station for the attendant. You have to have an attendant for the gas station.
That's correct.
And we already allotted a space for the attendant, so there's not a separate, in an independent office on the site. It is the, it is a functional area of the gas station.
That is correct.
Technically, I don't, I don't, it's, I don't know why we're calling it an office. It's the place where the attendant's going to be when he's not in his car.
Okay, that's a long way of saying it, and I can certainly put that on the side if I need to. I just didn't have the imagination to come up with another term.
As long as nothing else is done in that building, as long as you don't turn it back into a deli or sell oil or gas or maps or anything out of there. It's a pretty big building for one person, but I mean, the only person that should be in there is the attendant. So I don't see an issue why we, it's not even an office. It's it's the attendance.
Yeah. Nothing else, as I said, nothing else is going to happen in that building or in either, or in any of the buildings without site plan approval from this.
I'm fine with that.
So from what, so if I'm understanding you correctly, we do not need to have an additional space, an additional parking space. It's just, I believe, it's the five parking spaces of the computer for the gas station.
I mean, and if, because there's already an office in the garage. I assume that's what you were going to use for the attendant, but since it's just being relocated into the other building, if the electronics are in there, I don't see why it should be considered a separate and distinct office.
Right, okay. By the way, on that, the reason we're not using the offices in the other building is because the electronics are not there.
Yeah, I know.
So we would have liked to. It would have been a lot easier.
Right.
Okay. So that resolves that aspect of it. Thank you.
No problem.
Okay, anything, anybody else? Anything else?
This is a continued public hearing, Chairman.
Yeah, so should we open up the public?
Yes, Ira, if you would mind taking the screen down so I could see anybody that might.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Thank you so much.
Anybody else on the board have anything to say? We reviewed this last time, so I don't know much of a way of comment. I wonder if last time was really the, like, Mr. Emanuel brought up the the access for a vehicle around the building, and that's seems to be, have been addressed, so.
Okay.
Okay. You have a lot of people who want to talk?
Well, you need to open the public hearing, and I need a second.
Motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? All right, if anyone would like to speak, if you could please raise your hand, and then I will call on you. It comes up as Renee Zeal.
It's James Cheeseman.
Okay, Jim Cheeseman.
Yeah.
For the record, can you please state your name and address?
James Cheeseman, 166 Route 59, Suffolk, New York.
Okay.
Evening. My name is James Cheeseman. I own the property located at 166, 168, 184 Route 59, which is adjacent to the proposed gas station. I'm in the process of applying for approvals for a fund center on my property, which will be a great addition to the Village of Armont. In my, in my first informal meeting with the CDRC on January 11th, 2022, Mr. Crashhour brought up some issues of safety with the proposed gas station. Some of the safety issues Mr. Crashhour brought up are horrible turning radiuses, very tight site, issues getting gas deliveries, circulation. Gas deliveries are bad. They need to back up. In order to ensure and protect my property and future plans for my property is imperative that all safety issues at the proposed gas station be addressed. I kindly ask that you carefully review all variances waivers at the proposed gas station so that they do not negatively impact my property. It is important that you make my property, take my property into consideration in your review to ensure safety. When reviewing the submitted computer image rendering of the future gas station, please note the rendering depicts extensive encroachment into my property located at 184 Route 59. The distance from the side property line to the front quarter of the building is 8.7 feet. The distance tapers down to three feet at the rear corner of the building. The rendering depicts a wide walkway along the side of the building greater than three feet, a decorative plant at the rear corner, a long curve at the rear, six large shrubs along the side, extensive curves and asphalt pavement, an illusion of a much larger turning radius than actually exists. The depicting extends beyond the property line, creating a false image of the actual gas station property. The bulk requirements show two variances requested on the western side. They are minimum side setback required 40 feet, proposed three feet. Minimum side yard required 20 feet, proposed three feet. A waiver is also requested for the required 10-foot landscape area along the western property line. It appears that there is no space for any landscaping on the western property line. If you grant the requested waiver and variances, please require a tall privacy fence along the western property line. The fence will prevent the ongoing problem of driving, parking, and dumping on my property. I believe that the lack of space of the gas station property, these problems will only increase if a tall fence is not installed. The fence will also prevent the homeless squatter living in the rear of the gas station walking onto my property and bathing in the stream. I do not oppose the reopening of the gas station. I believe that is a positive step in revitalization. I urge the board to address the safety issues on this substandard lot. Pedestrian and vehicular traffic should be safely addressed. It should not burden the development of my property. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I respond?
Yeah, before that, Suzanne, can we repeat the protocols, the three minutes? And are you on top of that?
Yes, yes.
So he didn't do anything wrong, so we didn't tell him, but
No.
And I wasn't timing it, so I don't know exactly how long it was, but there is.
He was like a half, a half a minute over, but.
No problem. Thanks. Okay, just so we know.
Okay. I I believe that what Mr. Cheeseman just said made it appear as though the comments that I made were my personal opinions, and that couldn't be further from the truth. I don't get involved in my personal opinions on applications. It related to comments that we've received in the past when this has been before either CDRC or this board from other agencies, from the Tom and Fire Department, possibly our own fire inspector, our planner, et cetera. These were not, to be absolutely clear, my opinion. I'm here, I was merely the vehicle of conveying comments that were raised previously with regard to this application in its prior version or versions.
Okay.
This is not said, obviously, safety is paramount. But number one, these were not my opinions. Number two, the plans have changed significantly over time, and it's possible that the people that did make these comments may have a different view and may now view it as a lot of, if not all of the issues that were raised on the prior versions have been addressed. But clearly this board and the zoning board should always take safety as the primary concern for development or any construction in the Village of Armont or anywhere else for that matter.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to a couple of things that Mr. Cheeseman had to say because I think he is misinformed about some things. I'm not sure which rendering he's referring to, but I will tell him that the site plan provides for everything to be within the bounds of this property. There are no proposed encroachments whatsoever. We certainly understand what the boundaries are. He's right that some of these dimensions are tight, but again, everything that's going on will be within bounds. With respect to movements for the fuel trucks, the board will remember that we actually showed you a video, two videos, a video last time where a fuel truck actually entered and exited the site. And that, in addition to a letter that you received from the fuel supplier, I think was sufficient to give the board comfort that a fuel truck could move in and out. And certainly, if a fuel truck could move in and out of the site, then passenger vehicles could do so. We'll explore the idea of a fence along the western property line. We don't have a particular objection to that. How high that fence can go, that's regulated by the Village of Armont. Typically, and we don't have to go into it, but we'll certainly look into putting in a fence. We understand that you, that you want some protection, especially if, I believe you said it was going to be some sort of recreation center that you're proposing, that you want some protection that's absolutely reasonable. And with respect to the homeless people that's there, that has been a problem. We understand that. We're hoping that once this property is actually starting, actually put to use, that we'll be able to get a handle on the homeless and keep the, keep unauthorized people out of there. So we understand your concerns, and we're certainly willing to deal with them.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, the next person is Danielle Meehan.
Hi there. I'm Danielle Meehan. I live at 18 Ackerman Avenue in the Village of Suffolk. Excuse me, Village of Armont, I'm sorry. Um, I, am I correct that the gas tanks are in the buffer of the wetlands?
Yes, yes, they're within the 100-foot regulated area. That's where they were. That's where they are. Their DEC is, my understanding is that DEC is aware of that. Uh, their, um, uh, DEC is, is, uh, my understanding is that DEC is aware of that.
Is that in writing, Mr. Emanuel?
Uh, I believe we have DEC permits for this, or Health Department permits.
Is that correct? Does anyone know that?
I'll defer, I'll defer to, um, Ms. Berice on that.
Oh, okay.
I can do the research, but the tanks are not part of this application. They've already been installed. Nothing is changing at this time. They already had permits from when they installed them initially, but I can do research to find what, what permits they, they have received at that time.
Okay, so the Village of Armont's water already has, um, is in excess of what's allowable for something called PFAS, uh, which are chemicals from, um, a lot of times motor oil and gasoline after it breaks down and it, uh, causes cancer and, um, miscarriages and birth defects and things like that. And that's getting fixed, but, um, unfortunately, bury tanks do, do, uh, leak. And if this is, does leak, it's going to go right into, um, the water, which then goes into, uh, the Ramapo River, um, which is part of our drinking aquifer. So that is a concern. Um, and I'm not sure how it ended up there, or if that was, I, I just hope if the DEC says it's okay, I guess it's okay. Um, there is still contaminated soil. Does that get handled with the Z B A? It looked to me like.
Exactly. The soil, the soil has been removed.
It has been removed. Okay. Okay, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please raise your hand. I don't see any other hands up. Chairman Freeland.
Okay, thanks. Okay. If that's all, I guess, um, we should vote on referring them to the Z B A. Anything else to end that we missed?
Well, we gotta do something about the public hearing. Should we move it to a date uncertainty?
Yes. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, so make a motion to continue this public hearing, um, to date, Ira, you.
Well, it's gonna be a date uncertain.
Because they need to see the Z B A?
Right.
Correct.
So what that means, when they come back, they'll have to renotice and readvertise and do.
Understood.
And just for everyone's edification, um, because I don't even know that this has been brought up, uh, it's so recent. When it used to be that the governor, the former governor, um, had executive authority to, um, um, extend virtual meetings. Uh, when the legislature took that power away, they regained that power. Um, and, um, virtual meetings were set to expire on January fifteenth. Um, the Senate and the Legislature of New York State voted to extend that. Um, the, I read the statute ironically, when I looked for uh, the date that it was being extended to, it said, um, something along the lines of until further notice. Somehow, still can't figure out um, how this happens, where, um, the governor claims or may have gotten the authority, but, um, when she signed the actual law, uh, the law contains revision right now that says that virtual meetings are only continued to February fifteenth. Um, so one of two things is going to happen. Either she's going to extend it again or she won't, and we will be doing virtual meetings. I mean, in person, in, in person. Um, that will lead to some other things in terms of what times the meetings will uh, go to, but we don't have to get into that for now. But I'm mentioning that, um, because it relates to not only this application, but every application that we're going to be hearing tonight and, um, until February fifteenth.
Okay.
Good.
All right, so now we need the referral to.
Yeah, so we make a motion to continue this public hearing to date uncertain. I have a second.
What a guy.
And, and that means it would have to be readvertised and the same manner as, uh, this meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, Chairman.
Yeah.
No, I mean, now you need to do the motion for.
Referral to the C B A.
So I make the motion to refer them to the Z B A. This is Prime Pro Management, one ninety-four fifty-nine. Gas station, I have a second.
I'll send him.
Do we need to list the variances they're going for, Dan, or they could?
No.
Put them in the minutes? Okay.
Yep.
All right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Reposed, no?
None opposed. Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Take care.
Thank you.
Okay, our next application is the continued public hearing for fourteen North Armont Road, V Three Real Estate LLC, the Dunkin' Donuts for the proposed drive-through for the existing Dunkin' Donuts and amended site plan. And I believe we have Dave Pennella and Jeff Stewart and Mr. Greeley and Mr. The Engineer Sparacco on.
Yeah, uh, good afternoon, good evening. Um, I, I believe Ken Moore is also.
Oh, Ken Moran, okay.
Yeah, um, Suzanne, can I share my screen?
Yes, let me just, uh, go ahead.
Let me know if everybody can see that.
Mm-hmm.
Good. Uh, I, so we have a, a presentation to go through to recap, uh, our, our prior, um, uh, prior meetings. Um, and I think, uh, Ken is gonna start the conversation, uh, and then we'll go through, uh, our engineering, um, on the applicant.
Okay, uh, can you, everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is the, um, Dunkin' Donuts application V three for final site plan approval, special permit approval for a fast food restaurant and a parking waiver. Oh, we are applying for a drive-through to be added to the existing Dunkin' Donuts store located at the intersection of North Armont Road and Debonne Avenue. Currently, there's a Dunkin' Donuts store, convenience store and gas pumps at that location.
Speaking of that, we're supposed to be convenient, not convivants, right? Because that has different meaning.
That is correct.
Okay.
Sorry about that.
Yes, it's, I think it's convenient.
Okay.
Okay, the, um, property's in a V three, uh, V C zone. It's on the northwest corner of the intersection of Debonne and North Armont Road. And there's a traffic light there at the intersection. This is all existing. You know, east from the site, uh, North Armont Road is the old Friendly's Building. It's directly across the street. Uh, to the north is the O and R Substation, which is there. Uh, the south is Debonne Avenue again, and after that, there's a office building on the other side of Debonne. And to the west is the continuation of Debonne Avenue, which is in the rear, and then it goes into the Armont Gardens property, a distance of about two hundred and fifty feet from the, uh, store, site that, uh, we were talking about. We're asking for a drive-through, a small addition of seven hundred and eighty-three square feet, approximately. Uh, revised access to the site, revised circulation within the site, excuse me, in the site and additional landscaping and screening, uh, for the site. Uh, we've been through, uh, a lot of review. At this point, we've, um, need the drive-through because at the time we applied, it was at the beginning of the COVID, uh, situation and it changed everything, the way people do business. The drive-through will be there to allow customers to access the Dunkin' Donuts store without getting out of their car. And they do not have to, uh, they will not block any of the other circulation because they'll be in the drive-through lane, which is made especially just for that purpose of ordering and to pick up from the Dunkin'. The, uh, situation with COVID looks like it's going to be the new normal. It doesn't look like it's going to end anytime soon. And it's, um, basically changed a lot of people's, uh, shopping habits. And, uh, I don't think they're, they want to, a lot of people do not want to go back to the way it was. They want to do a drive-through if it's, uh, available. Not only is it, uh, you don't have to leave the car, it's quicker than going into the store, ordering something and then coming back out. Um, later on, they'll, uh, think we have the, the, uh, times that it takes, it's very quick to uh, put in an order and to pick it up. Now, this application is proposing a drive-through to this existing business that is being classified as a fast food restaurant now, even though it was Dunkin' Donuts store and it's not going to be any, it's going to still be the same store, but because it has a drive-through definition in the code says it's a fast food restaurant. To get approval, variances were required, a number of variances because requirements for the bulk excuse me, bulk regulations are, uh, different than from just a regular restaurant or the existing use. Uh, and they require a lot, uh, larger setbacks and side yards and so forth. And they're substantially increased. Uh, after appearing at the C D R C a number of times and the planning board a number of times, the planning board determined that this is a type-two action, which means that it, under secret, doesn't need any further environmental review. And it also basically, type-two action is considered one that does not have uh, any type of significant impact on the environment. Board referred us to the Z B A for the requested variances, which were unanimously granted. The findings of the Z B A determined that the proposed use will not have any negative impact and will not change the character of the neighborhood, which is, uh, some of the standards that you have to use for going for variance. One of the reasons for the Z B A decision is that the Dunkin' Donuts was an existing use for many years. Also, the applicant, uh, will provide additional screening, plantings and fencing as a buffer between the adjoining parcels. So they've, they've reviewed this a number of times. The project has been reviewed by the Armont Building Department, C D R C, Z B A, A R C, the Village Traffic Engineer, the Village Engineer, the Village Planner, Rockland County Department of Planning, Tom and Fire Department, Rockland County Highway Department and Rockland County Sewer Department and Ramapo D P W. Uh, and also our, uh, client, uh, the applicant has, um, a traffic consultant, engineer, landscape architect, and architect who have reviewed the plans and have modified them based on the recommendations of the both, uh, boards and agencies that reviewed it. And this will happen many times to improve the, uh, circulation and to comply or to, uh, comment the experts that have, uh, made their comments regarding the traffic and other issues that, uh, they, they feel the, uh, need to be considered. Uh, what we're proposing is, uh, improvement on the traffic flow, both on his roads and also in on the site, you know, the internal traffic flow and the parking on the site. The applicant has submitted a detailed response, which we submitted to the planning board regarding the comments of the play, uh, Department of Planning for Rockland County. And Steve Sparacco, our engineer, uh, sent a detailed letter with our response to the comments of the uh, planning department. That letter was dated November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. That was submitted for your review. Now, the Z B A has reviewed the Rockland County Department Letter, I'm sorry, Rockland County Department of Planning Letter to the Z B A, which is basically the same as their letter to the planning board. Uh, they reviewed it in detail when we were appearing there. We had a number of, uh, hearings there. And they, uh, reviewed all these, um, comments that the county had and we responded with, uh, our, um, responses, which they reviewed. And, uh, after reviewing everything, we were granted all of the variances that we requested. It was five to zero. It was unanimous. Okay, the professionals from our, um, project are going to testify, and I just want to give a brief uh, summary of what we're proposing. But the bottom line is, we're improving the situation there. What we're doing is going to improve the situation on the roads and in the, uh, site, the circulation of traffic and the parking on the site. So there's really no downside. And all these, uh, changes that were made were based on the comments of all the different agencies. Uh, this will not set a precedent because, uh, there's been a number of other projects who had multiple variances. One was the one thirty Route fifty-nine, which included twenty-two and twenty-four State Street. Uh, seven variances were granted, including a zero-foot buffer, uh, and I believe that has been approved by your board. Um, and also there's a Z B A resolution, resolution, sorry, I gotta scratch it. So, uh, the resolution for one twenty-four Route fifty-nine, where eight variances were granted, and a lot of these were, uh, large, um, uh, large variances. Now, now that we've been granted this, um, these variances, the, uh, site plan has to be deemed or treated as it's complies with the bulk regulations because the zoning board had granted the variances, so, uh, they now comply with all the, uh, zoning regulations. And at this point, we're asking just for a, a parking waiver, twenty-five percent parking waiver, approval of the final site plan and a special permit for a fast food restaurant, which is required. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to, um, I guess Mr. Greeley is going to go next.
I, we're gonna have, uh, Steve go through the, uh, the engineering and the site plan first, Ken.
Okay, then I stand corrected. Steve is gonna go next.
Thanks, Ken. Uh, good evening, members of board in the public. Uh, I'm just gonna briefly go through the existing conditions plan and then the developed plan, and then we're gonna introduce Phil Greeley to go through the circulation. Uh, as you can see, the existing, uh, plan in front of you, there's two, uh, access points onto North Armont Road. Um, one to the north, one to the south, and then there's one to North Debonne Avenue, uh, to the south. Uh, right now, there's ten spaces on site, one of them being handicapped, and behind the handicap, there's a dumpster, uh, for their trash and disposables. Uh, there's no designated, uh, loading area on this particular plan existing today. Um, and, uh, we're looking to improve the situation. So at this point, I'll ask Dave to shift to next plan. This is our proposed plan. Uh, we're maintaining the, and improving the northerly, Eric North Armont Road, uh, entryway. And I'll have Phil go into that later. Uh, and we're closing down the southerly, northerly, North Armont Road, uh, exit or entry. Um, this is gonna help the traffic and circulation substantially. Uh, we've widened the, uh, area next to the furthest gas, gas pump to the east. Uh, it was, it's existing seventeen point five feet and proposed to be twenty feet. So we've actually made, made it so there's enough room for. Uh, it was, it's existing seventeen point five feet and proposed to be twenty feet. So we've actually made, made it so there's enough room for uh cars to pass through uh to access the new proposed drive through uh that we've proposed on the plan to the west. Uh, seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet and also there's a walk-in area of hundred and forty-seven uh square feet. Now, as you can see from the drive-through, it uh, we've showed stacking for up to twelve cars in this drive-through area. Uh, there's also a dumpster location that's uh out of the way. It's no longer in front of the handicap. Um, we've maintained a handicap uh alongside the uh, the drive aisle for the um uh drive-through parking and we're proposing, we're going to propose uh four uh movable uh posts to make sure that none of the traffic leeches off uh into the parking striped area. Uh, finally, we've got a loading zone now where there wasn't one before. So substantially improved on this site. Uh, we have twelve spaces now where there was ten. And as you can see, that we've shown some caution, slow striping as well between the gas pumps uh in the middle of the site uh to uh help uh control the traffic. And at this point, I think I'm gonna introduce Phil Greeley to go through the traffic in uh uh in circulation. Oh, by the way, before I do that, Phil, uh, this road around the building is all been uh designed and approved by the fire uh inspector uh so that there's adequate turning radius around the whole building and around the whole site. It's a vast improvement in what's there today. Phil?
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, members of the public, Philip Greeley from Colliers Engineering and Design. So uh, we prepared a uh traffic study uh for the project. And in terms of uh the improvements on the plan, I think Steve has given a, a, a good quick synopsis of that. Um, you know, in terms of the drive-through area, uh, that, that's a full pa- uh pass-through lane in addition to the drive-through stack-up. So that provides in another way of exiting the site to get out to North Devon Avenue. And it also allows bypass of, of anybody stopped at the drive-through or order area. Uh, as part of our uh review, uh, we uh had made modifications here based on input from the Rockland County Highway Department. Um, under existing conditions, the southerly driveway, which uh Steve had mentioned is being closed. That's in this uh area where the uh striping is uh and then the raised area. Uh, so that driveway is being closed. That driveway creates some problems today because of the proximity to the traffic signal and it also creates more uh conflicts internally. Uh, the northerly driveway, we're enhancing the ability to make right turns out. Uh, that will be a right turn in, right turn out driveway. The driveway does not permit left turns. Uh, we are providing additional signing again at the direction of the uh Rockland County Highway Department, including uh signing uh directly across from the driveway and to reinforce and replace uh any signs uh per their requirements so that no one tries to make a left turn in or a left turn out. It'll be right turns in, right turns out only. Uh, which in many hours of the day, that already does, you know, kind of self-enforcing because of the traffic on North Airmont Road. Uh, one other thing, you know, before we get into some of the other details is uh a, a lot of uh studies have been done on uh these facilities, both with and without drive-throughs. And while we're provo- we're increasing the parking on the site, uh, we, the studies have found that the drive-through actually reduces the parking demand for uh Duncan Donut um significantly. In most cases, anywhere from forty to fifty percent reduction in the actual parking that the Duncan Store uh would, would need. Uh, in, in terms of this uh new bypass lane, one of the other benefits is uh that traffic exiting from the drive-through does not have to interface with the gas and convenience traffic when they're leaving. Uh, the, the, this plan represents uh input from uh all the different uh involved uh agencies here. We had input from your planners, your engineers, the zoning board and, and yourselves, uh, or some of the former members actually. Um, that we made these modifications to address uh some of that mixing of traffic. Uh, in terms of uh the amount of traffic, we've assumed, e- even though there's a Duncan uh at this facility today and we have the gas and we have the convenience store, uh, we've assumed uh as a, an increase uh with drive-through traffic based on the square footage and, and the drive-through itself, uh, which is probably, you know, conservative because, you know, most of the trips for this type of facility are, you know, attracted from the existing roadway or a combination of, you know, people already getting gas and, and or Duncan. So I, I think uh the project has been reviewed by your consultant. Uh, the traffic study was reviewed early on. Uh, they agreed with the conclusions. Uh, that was back in I think December of twenty twenty that that occurred. And then uh they issued a supplemental after we worked on the onsite circulation uh supplemental uh letter in February of uh twenty twenty-one. Uh, just two last points on the site plan. There was also some concern i- in the area that's uh between the uh pump islands uh about the width there and, and traffic cutting through. So we, we've added some additional striping. We don't wanna impede that area because we want people to be able to circulate when they're near the pump islands or getting to and from parking spaces. Uh, and as uh Steve also indicated, in the area where the fuel deliveries occur at the north end, uh, we've added in uh four bollards. These are typical uh reef uh, you know, flexible bollards that are used on the highways. Um, and they're, you know, if they get damaged, they're easily replaced. Uh, but they control the traffic, so we don't have people speeding across any areas. And again, these were things that were added in response to some of the uh other comments that we had received on the plan. Uh, the last area, again, uh along uh North Airmont Road where you would be approaching to get to the drive-through lanes. Um, we are widening that area to increase the width so that if someone is at the pump island, there's more than adequate width to pass through that area. Uh, that traffic will be controlled, stop controlled. Uh, there are other, some other enhancements uh for site distance, uh looking, you know, to the north. Uh, there's some excess vegetation that has kind of overgrown and we're going to improve that to uh just improve the visibility for both uh people uh exiting from the site and those people approaching from the north. Um, so they have better visibility uh approaching this area. So I, I think those are the, the main items on the plan uh that we've, you know, modified to improve circulation. Uh, you know, handle the traffic flows here uh and, and everything else, you know, relative to North Airmont Road. Uh, the signing and the striping and the curbing, that's been discussed with the highway department. There'll be some restriping along North Devon Avenue to define the lanes. Um, and e- everything else is, is pretty much straightforward. So I think that's a quick synopsis of, of where we are. But we'll get into some more details as we move further in the presentation, but those are the main highlights.
A- and I think the next section, we just wanna kind of do a, a, a review and I'll ask Phil and Ken to, to speak on some of these, but these are the prior reviews and approvals that we've gone through on the project and some of the uh comments uh with respect to the uh, the key area. So I think I'll have uh, I'll uh Phil continue on, on this section with item number, the first item uh with the C D R C.
Yeah, so uh, a- and again, I've, I've highlight, I've mentioned some of these already, but uh, we, we had met and received comments. Uh, we prepared a traffic study uh October of twenty twenty. Um, and that traffic study analyzed the, the existing uh conditions, uh adjustments were made, you know, uh to pre-covid conditions in terms of traffic flows uh based on historical information. And, you know, the conclusion of our study was that uh with the improvements that we're making, the closing of the sa- south driveway, uh, some signal timing modifications as per uh the Rockland County Highway Department that the additional traffic that the drive-through would generate can be accommodated uh adequately and would not impact external uh traffic operations. And uh that was, you know, concluded in our study. Uh, the, as I said, our traffic study was reviewed by uh your traffic engineer and uh he issued a memo in December of twenty twenty. Uh, and again, these are just some of the, the key points. Uh, basically agreeing that uh there would not be a signi- significant impact on the ro- external roadways and intersections in the vicinity of the site and that the access modifications uh including the closing of the southerly driveway and restricting of left turn movements uh should improve traffic flow through that area. Uh, those were really the, the key points at that time. Uh, as we'll get into a little further, there were some other modifications on the site that further improve circulation and, and we'll cover those a little, little later. Uh, in terms of the fire department review, uh, Mr. Sparacco had met with the uh fire and we've modified uh those uh the plans to accommodate their uh turning vehicles. Uh, and again, we'll get into this a little bit more, but that was uh reviewed by them and approved and found to be satisfactory uh uh last uh February.
Excellent. Uh, in the, in the next section, uh Ken, I think we're gonna speak to the uh, the uh other meetings that we've gone through and approved.
Okay, I, I've mentioned this briefly, but uh this board, the planning board referred us to the Z B A uh after making a determination that this is a type two action uh which requires no further action of regarding uh environmental review and also uh this type of action does not have a significant impact on the community or the character of the neighborhood or existing conditions in the neighborhood. Then Phil could address the highway department. Rocket County Highway Department reviewed and approved the proposals uh that we had made regarding the uh the road in front of the uh, the site. Uh, in uh October, this went to the zoning bo- it had already been before the zoning board. But um I believe this was the third, at least the third meeting we had, but they uh proved unanimously our requested variances and all the uh G M L overrides that we had requested. It's there, I, again, there G M L was uh similar to the planning board's G M L, had basically the same issues.
Ken, did you uh provide Suzanne a copy of that easement agreement?
Yes, I did.
Yes, yes, we got it twice.
Okay.
Okay. Then uh recently it went to the uh A R C, uh which they approved it uh color in the uh application of the uh division. Uh, the easement agreement with the Airmont Gardens for private roadway access and expanded landscape buffer. I believe that has been signed. Um as you know, uh, Devon Avenue in this area is a private road. It's not a public road. It was offered for dedication, but it's never been accepted uh by the village. So right now, it is a private road and based on the comments from the zoning board, we're expanding the landscape buffer into uh the Airmont Gardens property for their benefit. It'd be basically uh plantings. We submitted uh planting, the landscape architect submitted plantings to not only make it uh, to buffer it and to uh cut down on any visual impact. Also, it looks nice. It has, you know, be new uh new plantings, which uh we're obligated to take care of. And so far, uh, we've had a, a few comments, but there's been no public opposition to our application, either planning board or in the zoning board uh public hearings.
Here, here's the rendering that we provided to the um A R C um uh uh just last month and uh basically no comments. They were pretty pleased, very pleased with our, our presentation our, uh, what we're proposing on the building. This is a quick uh look of the uh the changes we're making that shows the addition, the materials. We've submitted all those uh to, to the board, uh, including signage, uh, and they were uh approved us and there's uh Susan provided the uh letter um to the board uh for everyone's review. But the, the next section, again, we just wanna highlight some of the, the, the key areas. And I think it's, you know, we're trying to the point out that, you know, the benefits that uh Phil and uh Steve had uh spoken about uh show no negative impact. All right, there's a lot of, a lot of uh uh improvements going on to the, onto the property, but none of them negatively uh changed the uh traffic environment around us, our neighbors. Uh, so we just wanna kind of point these out and if we have questions as we go through them, uh, I think Steve's gonna take the first section here, uh, just to make it very clear so we can easily understand the differences uh in the first sections and uh parking. So I'll let Steve speak.
The, yeah, the existing uh to the left uh is ten spaces, as you can see with the, the pop-up there. Uh, existing conditions and to the right, we have proposed conditions. You have not only the twelve spaces proposed, but also there's twelves, I think, uh, twelve, I believe, uh stacked along, yes, twelve along the drive-through lane, still maintaining the access around. So that's a substantial uh improvement from what exists.
Yeah, so the benefit here is there's, we're able to uh stack and, and house substantially more cars on the property. And those same customers that are, were parking uh in and around the gas pumps and, and a lot of cases staying at the gas pump, then going inside to the Duncan Donuts are now leaving and able to go around and using some of these twelve. They're not parking spaces, but they're queuing. So not only we, we started with ten space, we increased that by two. We are, we are requesting a waiver on that. Um, but you can see we're significantly uh increasing the amount of cars on the property without, without uh hindering any additional traffic. Okay, I'm sorry, Steve.
So this is uh more for Phil to address. This is uh the closure of the lower southerly uh North Airmont Road access. I'll let Phil talk about this one.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So, so uh the, the photograph on the left is what you typically would see uh traffic that backs up uh from the light at uh North Devon Avenue. This is southbound on North Airmont Road. So that the southerly driveway, which is in the far uh end of this uh picture, you know, is, is, we're closing that off because that was a point of conflict with people leaving at the same time that traffic is either queuing or moving through there. So again, that was uh initially with the input from Rockland County Highway Department and that area will be uh reclaimed, the sidewalk re-established uh and some landscaping uh added in that area. Uh, this next diagram really focuses in on the, the north driveway. And uh right now, um, you know, that driveway, there are signs for no left turns exiting. Uh, we're gonna reinforce the sign across and the placement of that as you exit the driveway, the, the no left turn sign is a little bit too far to the left and we're gonna relocate that and put a larger size sign per Rockland County Highway Department, pretty much where that black car is in the picture, in the lower picture. So that will be highly visible, so people do not try to make that uh movement. Uh, the curb radius exiting this driveway heading south will be improved. Um, and then the other item in the other area, which you can see in the top photograph is as you're approaching from the north, uh, the, the vegetation there has really kind of uh overgrown and your sightline is not very good. That will be pruned, trimmed back- That will be pruned, trimmed back and/or replaced with lower plantings so that the sightline for southbound traffic is improved as well as for traffic that will be traveling north to get to the drive-through along the parallel to North Armont Road. So that will improve the visibility for both of those. And anyone heading towards the drive-through internally will clearly be able to see any approaching vehicles turning into the site before they make their maneuver. And this diagram on the right does also depict where we are improving the radius for the right turn exiting from the site.
And then here's the positions of those no-left turn signs that Phil was just mentioning.
Correct.
So again, a lot more visible. These two are fine, but the other one, this is lost over here. You can barely see it. And it's going to be centrally located much larger. Okay, go to the next slide.
So in, in terms of when, when traffic exits from the drive-through with this, the new driveway on the westerly portion of the property, as I said before, that fully separates the traffic exiting the drive-through from any activities and exiting from the gas area. So they will come to a stop, have visibility in both directions and then proceed out towards the traffic light. It gets them further away from the signals, so we can have more stacking and just a better overall flow. And as Steve mentioned before, we have stacking for 12 vehicles in that northerly area.
Yep. And what we've done, what we've done here, because this is also a bypass lane, so that cars that are, you know, getting gas or in, in the service area, if they would choose to go to exit north, to North Devon Ave, without having to turn around and circulate back through the gas pump areas, we're adding a sign here and they use the bypass lane to go around and kind of get back here and go stack right at the light. So again, frees up some of that traffic flow, eliminates some of that K-turn type maneuvering you'll have to do or would have have to do on the property. We could circulate right around the property and not avoid that maneuver.
Providing an alternate, yes.
Yep, thank you.
This is just a depiction of the bollards, the flexible post that I referred to before, so that we don't have anybody, and this would be really be for more off-peak hours where, you know, you don't want people coming across and just trying to get to the drive-through or the bypass lane. So that defines the area, but it's, it helps with snow plowing and it's, and it's something that if they did get damaged, they're very easily replaced. It's typically used in, you know, highway applications. This area here really is to give you an idea of, for the, the traffic flow around the eastern side of the property, we're increasing that width. This actually is a fairly large-sized vehicle getting gas. As you see, the existing condition, it would be tight for a vehicle to get past there. We are widening that curb line, increasing that width, so we have a total of 20 feet total to allow full movement of anybody wanting to get to the drive-through lane. Again, that's all part of it. And there would be, of course, no parking there. That'll be posted accordingly. And that area near the pump will be striped off so that vehicles will, you know, basically be in the proper position. But this gives you a good, pretty good feeling in terms of this is a fairly large vehicle that would be at that location and allow us to maneuver past there.
Yeah, the point here is that, so that we don't block any of the circulation, which currently happens today. So we can come in there, they basically park there. It, it limits them using the gas pumps because it's not wide enough. Or the person at the gas pumps has parked too far over and you can't get past it. It's just, it's too narrow for two, two cars of traffic and that's what we're correcting.
Yeah, this is the fire truck access. We showed some charting movements all around the building. Again, we, the fire chief reviewed this. He's fine. Of course, any cars that would be in there with any other, other, just like any other emergency would have to move. But this is showing that there's adequate radius to turn in every direction coming off the North Armont Road through the site.
That's just the fire vehicles leaving the property as well. So this has all been, you know, confirmed and designed and approved by the fire marshals, Steve mentioned.
This is one of my favorite slides. There's currently no place for loading and unloading at the site. The, you can see the conditions at the, on the left-hand side there, the beer trucks, the food trucks, whatever is coming to deliver, there's really no place to park, so they just park in the fire zone. Which is not ideal. So with the proposed plan, we're showing a designated area to the south of the building, 12 foot wide, 40 foot, 45 foot long, plenty of room for these trucks and out of the way and out of the fire zone, most importantly.
Yeah, I, I would say that we were provided probably a dozen different photos of vehicles parked all over the property. This is just probably one of the better examples. But it's a problem. They're parking where the gas pumps are in front of the bill, in the fire lane, where the gas loading is, and that this really cleans up that, that, that area.
Here's another ideal one to see. You can see that the, the big van there is parked in the handicap spot. And right behind it is the dumpster. So anyone that comes in with a garbage truck looking to take away the trash has to make sure there's no cars in the way. The new location is right off the, the bypass road to the north and west of the site. And it's perfectly placed. Nothing's in the way. The truck can get up there, get the trash and get out. It's a substantial improvement for what's there today. This is our landscape plan prepared by Yost Design, showing a substantial planting on and off the property toward the Armont Gardens and also showing fencing, beautiful layout and extensive plant, planting to provide in lieu of the buffer.
Thank you, Steve. So there, we have a, kind of a very quick animated video. As we looked at the whole property as a whole, and we looked at all those different situations that Steve and Phil just went through, we tried to, how do we represent those all together, right? And, and see how the traffic flows on and off North Armont Road, through the property, all those different conditions, people getting gas, people leaving, people going into the, the Duncan Drive-through lane and, and how they interacted when they leave. So we, we created this really brief animated video to kind of give you a sense of how the flow of traffic would, is working on the property, what the design intent. Just takes a second, the loader will come right up. There we go. We even have some trucks that are coming to get the trash delivery, using the bypass lane. You see how our intention on how they queue to the, to the ordering point, then they'll move forward to the pickup window. Okay. And I think that concludes our, our presentation of, in our recap of, you know, our proposed plan. I think we want to open up for any questions.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
So I guess if you could just stop sharing the screen. Just to speak to the people.
Bear with one second, here we go.
Okay. Yes, let's open it up to the consultants, see if they, see what they have seen. Who's, who's the, oh, Eve's the engineer for this one?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. I did prepare a letter, but it's rather dated. It's back from November because we haven't had a resubmission, but I think the comments are still relevant. Number one was just noting that the variants that were granted by the zoning board. Number two is regarding the 25% parking waiver that the applicant is requesting. Number three is regarding just a minor plan change or correction. Number four has to do with the drainage system and that's something that would be addressed during construction, and if there's any conflict, they would have to address it then. Number five is regarding patrol signage. And the signage would not be allowed to be located within the drainage easement, but that's just a minor adjustment. They can shift it outside of the drainage easement and still be effective. Number six is regarding erosion control. That's a standard practice and every applicant complies with that. Number seven is noting a stormwater maintenance agreement will be required. Again, that's a standard item. Number eight is regarding the landscape plans that the applicant already provided some testimony regarding, and I defer to the planner. But just to note to the planning board, if you're not familiar with the full application, due to the small size of the property, the required buffers are actually off-site on adjacent property. And the adjacent property owner, from my understanding, did supply an agreement to allow them to provide the buffering and the landscaping on their property. But that is a legal issue, so that has to be reviewed by the planning board attorney. And as noted, a lot of coordination has already taken place with Rockland County Highway. Their approval is needed. And as I understand it, Rockland County Highway is on board with the changes to the curb cut openings because it does provide for a safer and enhanced plan in terms of traffic circulation. And that concludes my report. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Okay, thanks.
All right. So I just had, similar to Eve, my memo was also dated back in November. And the two remaining things were really just the fact that this board's going to have to give a waiver to a 25% waiver for the parking requirements that's requested. A couple of signs, we're just mentioning, they, they do note a digital menu board and drive-through directional sign. So we would recommend as a condition of approval that, that gets submitted and reviewed, of those types of signs. And then the last item was the landscape being, which you just went through. So other than that, the board, this applicant, some GML overrides. Thank you.
Yeah. And if, Mr. Chairman, if I could pick up on that point.
Yes.
When Mr. Moran was talking about how the zoning board granted overrides of the conditions in the GML and acknowledged that they were almost verbatim comments that were made to this board. Have to make it clear that although some of you may be thinking, well, we already did it, so we don't have to do it again. That's not the case. You have to, for every board that takes an action that involves a GML, particularly one with overrides, they have to independently review and determine whether or not to override a comment that the applicant cannot meet that the county wants them to meet. A, for the newer board members, I think this might be the first time that we have had an opportunity to talk about GMLs. I'm going to give you a Cliff Note version. We can certainly, when we don't have five items on an agenda, take additional time to talk about it. But the concept is, first off, if a application is located within 500 feet of a municipal boundary, a county road, a county property, et cetera, that it has to be referred to the county planning department for their review. As part of their review, you should be familiar with this by now. They go over all the application materials and make comments, good, bad, or indifferent with regard to their view of the application. If there are elements of an application that they are not in favor of, they say it in various different forms. And it would require what's called an override if the board was so inclined to grant the override, which they are under no obligation to do. And that would require the board stating the reasons why they are choosing to override the commenter comments of the Rockland County Planning Department. And that vote has to be what is called a supermajority vote, meaning a majority plus one of a full board complement. So where normally they would only need three out of five votes, they would now, with regard to the override provisions, need four of five votes in favor of the override. And if that occurred, Suzanne would have to send the override resolution along with, if the application was approved, the approval resolution to the Rockland County Department of Planning. That's my Cliff Note version.
Okay, thanks for that.
Okay.
Okay, any of our members, anybody have any questions, any comments?
Yeah, Dan, did you get a chance to review the landscaping buffer easement? And what are your comments on that?
No, I did not.
So we gotta wait. And
It could, it could be subject to that.
Is that the letter from ABD Capital?
Why? Would you make it subject? What if it wasn't a good legal document then?
Then they'd have to make it a good legal document.
Suz, can we clarify?
Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
So, John, a, a good question. So we have a letter from our butter. And Peter Murray is here attending the meeting to speak on our behalf with respect to that. But we have an agreement with them. The, the easement has not been fully drafted and because we're waiting for this approval. Once that approval, we'll draft the legal document. And our understanding is we'd make an approval contingent upon that, satisfying the town requirements.
Well, that would explain why I haven't reviewed it.
Yeah, we, we have a letter of agreement. We have him here. Yeah, we have a letter of agreement. We have him here. He's able to speak tonight. And then, once we get an approval, we will draft the legal document.
And I guess my only other concern was traffic. I mean, I saw your animation, but I don't think it was Friday afternoon during the summer. And I did get the memo from Valerie, so thank you for the memo, Valerie. And I'm assuming that you and Nelson and Pope are okay with the traffic study as presented.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, I was wondering about the GMLs. Is now the time to go over some of these, some of these issues that were brought up in the GML?
Well, it's still a continued public hearing.
Right, not to vote on them, just to.
When we do that, Suzanne.
Yeah.
It, it, it might behoove you to pull the override from the zoning board so that we can get the language that was used there.
Well, I'm at home, so I don't have it. I apologize.
Okay.
We did, excuse me, this is Ken Moran. We did Morocco and Youngblood, they submitted a letter, which was reviewed by the other consultants and myself regarding the GML. It stated November 16th, 2021, which was submitted to the planning board, which is our response to all the comments by the.
And I have that, and I put that in everybody's packet again, because I didn't know if they still had it from November.
And Suzanne, if you'd like, I could put that up on the screen if you want to scroll through item by item like we did at the ZBA meeting.
Sure.
You know what? I, I mean, if, if we didn't have five items on the agenda and.
Four items, Dan, not five.
Okay. But on this item, I think we spent an hour and six minutes already. And we haven't even heard from the public.
Dan, do you want to maybe suggest, I know we have to go to the public, but that you and I over the next month can put together a draft of the, of the overrides for the board's consideration?
Valerie, you are starting to read my mind. Yeah. I was, that is exactly where I was going.
Okay, even though we have their response from November 16th.
What, are we going to go line by line?
It's not like it's going through 12 variances like we did at ZBA. It's not that as extensive.
Okay, up to the chairman. Not my call.
Yeah, I think we should, I do have this, by the way, the ZBA override resolution was in our packet, so I see that's here. And I do see your responses to these issues, so I think we should open up to the public first and hear what they have to say and then make a decision.
Well, in all the other public hearings, I will say we didn't really have maybe one. If two people commenting, if anyone would like to speak, raise your hand. And I also have a letter that was submitted that should be read into the record.
We have to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Yes.
And I'll make the motion.
And I need a second.
Second.
Okay, thank you, Morikai.
All in favor?
Everyone, okay. Remember, everybody, it's three-minute cap. Danielle Meehan.
Hi there, Danielle Meehan, 18 Ackerman Avenue in the Village of Armont. I think these are great improvements. One thing, when people, when vehicles are going to be exiting and making a left onto DeBonne Avenue, which I think most will be, there are a lot of pedestrians from people who live behind the gas station on DeBonne. Is it possible, maybe signs could be put up of beware pedestrians or something like that? That would be the only thing I could possibly suggest, other than, you know, I think it's going to really improve everything with the way it is now, because there are a lot of pedestrians, especially nice weather, who walk around that area.
We have no issue putting up.
Thank you.
We have no issue putting up signage, alerting people to the presence of pedestrians and just to take care.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I think someone's raising his hand, Peter Murray. Yeah, you have to unmute. I'm letting you unmute, but you, okay.
I'm unmuted. Thank you. Yeah. Hi, my name is Peter Murray. I appreciate you hearing what I have to say. I, my residence is 3 Sycamore Lane, White Plains, New York. However, I am the owner of the property management company for Armont Gardens. And I'm speaking on the owner's behalf. I've had the pleasure of working with this team over the past six months or so. They've been receptive to all of our concerns regarding the residents at Armont Gardens. And I am quite satisfied that the, the plan will both protect my residents and enhance the village in terms of traffic and also having a good drive-through within the village. And as mentioned regarding an agreement for the use of our roadway, we do have a written, a letter agreement, but it has not yet been blessed by council. And my understanding in talking with folks from the applicant that once these approvals are in place or sooner, if necessary, we would enter into the agreement to reflect what we've agreed upon. So I have no further comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Please raise your hand. I'm just going through it. I don't know if you want me to read the letter, Chairman Freeland?
Yeah, if it's not too long, sure.
Well, it's about a half page. Do you want me to read quickly?
Could you give us the gist?
It's basically from Chris Basti, who's the owner of V3 Real Estate. He apologizes that he couldn't be here, but he discusses that the traffic flow will be better. It will not negatively impact. It'll improve the internal traffic flow, and the customer congestion will be alleviated, and there won't be any blocking of customers and cars from the pumping gas station areas, and it will create less traffic problems than what they already have with the parking lot. The convenience store deliveries with the new loading zone will increase, as they recapped earlier, and the proposed coverage will eliminate the southerly entrance, which is reducing the chance of accidents because they're making a left-hand turn. And the winding of the curb area of the pumps closest will allow for smoother flow. And he feels that the overall site will help with obstacles, keep the traffic flowing, and he appreciates the time that the boards have taken into looking into the matter. Okay.
Thanks, thanks. That was great. So nobody else?
There's no one else up that's, that I can see, either on the phone or who has raised their hands? So I don't know if you want to close the public hearing. That's up to you.
So I just want to ask Dan one more time, just to recap what are, what the sequence of events would be now. Is he there?
I don't see him, but I believe Valerie, if I'm correct, you have to close the public hearing?
Oh, that would be correct, yes. Especially if the board is ready to make, have a vote, not necessarily tonight, but within the next 60 days on the application.
Sorry, say that again?
So typically, there's a, there's a 60-day. So you, if once you close a public hearing, you have 60 days to make a decision. So if you're willing, if you believe you'll make a decision within the next 60 days, go ahead and close the public hearing tonight. If you prefer to keep that public hearing open, you're more than welcome to keep it open until you're ready to make that decision.
I agree with co-counsel.
Yeah, unless you're making the decision this evening.
I guess the question is.
We thought you were.
Should we ask the board members how they feel? Hearing. Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, that's a good idea, John. You start. What do you think?
Yeah, still a little concerned with traffic, but I think based on the results and the response we got from our consultants, I kind of, kind of go with I'm okay with the application. Initially, I was a little apprehensive, but I think based upon the traffic study, what they've done to improve the traffic, the amount of parking spaces and the stacking they have, I know that was a big concern from the Rockland County GML. So I would have to say I'm okay with it, even though initially I was against it.
Okay.
Anybody else?
Well, who's the next member?
Russell Morikai.
Yeah, this is Russ. I guess in general, I would tend to agree with John's comments in terms of initial concerns for parking, but I think the net benefit overall with the layout and the design, it's, it's a, it's a net positive. So I, I don't have an objection at all.
Okay.
Morikai?
Same here. In the beginning, I were concerned about the traffic. Well, I guess that was addressed and opposed, and I'm okay with it as well.
Morrison, any comment?
I still think there's a lot of traffic on North Armont Road. There are people come and go. However, I will not stand against it.
I just, myself, I had two questions about the GML, but I guess the point was when we, if and when we vote on overriding the GMLs, we'll have that addressed. Does that fit you there?
Well, you got to give reasons why you're going to override.
Right.
So I think the big one was the traffic, and I think they've satisfied my concerns.
So I believe there's only two overrides, correct, Dan and Ken?
I don't have it in front of me.
Would you like me to put up on the screen, Susan?
I have.
The other one was the setbacks.
Maybe it's three. Certainly not 13 like the ZBA.
So not all these GML comments apply to us?
No, this is the GML for planning. When they, the variance, we had to go through and every variance to override.
Okay.
We don't have to do that for planning. We just have to go over the items that they, they noted with the disapproval. In particular, the first one was the traffic.
So we're looking at the GML response.
So what, what they have on, yeah, what they have on the screen is the applicant's response to the GML, and their, their suggested reasoning for overriding if the board agrees to it or not.
So would you like us to read the, our response to each one of the items like we did before?
No, I think I'd shoot myself. No, don't read them all. No.
Just to be clear, we're not, we don't have to override all 14 of these?
No.
Okay, so which ones do need an override?
This is Ken Moran. We have one and two have to be overwritten.
Right.
Those are the only two?
We have to do the planning board waiver, and we have to do the special permit, correct?
Parking waiver, right.
Parking. I'm sorry, parking waiver. Thank you.
All right, the number five, it says that the toll and fire department wants sprinkler system, but I believe they've changed since that time because there's no really cooking going on. It's just reheat, heating food that's been prepared already. So they don't have an actual kitchen. I don't think that applies anymore. And we have the other ones. Number nine is.
Yeah.
We've already, we have to override it, but we've revised our plans, so that should be overwritten at this point for nine and 10. Address those two areas. We've revised the plan to.
Yeah, this site plan already.
Yeah, to respond to those comments, so they should be overwritten since we've responded to it.
Dan, I did email you all the GMLs, the three for the, that we received, for the applications. I don't know if you saw that email.
It was at 4:30.
I know. In your packet.
Where, where did I tell you I was at 4:30?
Getting dinner, lunch, whatever. Anyway.
Yeah, it's impossible. Can you just address how you responded to numbers nine and 11?
Would you like this, we could show the, you want to see the site planning? That might be the best.
Yeah, I have the, I have this page in front of me, just a little elaboration.
Okay.
Because I don't remember where the air pump or vacuum was. It was in your presentation. I apologize.
Steve, correct me if I'm wrong. I know you're on the call. I believe it's right here where they exist today.
Yeah, that's where the, the air pump and the vacuum are. And as you can see, there's no more queuing box that goes past the two parking spaces in that area. So we're not blocking the area that they were in question.
So their concern was that someone's sitting at the pump, some car would block the parking spaces. So you moved it over?
And, and, and what we did is we intended, these are the most, these parking spaces are furthest from the service station, so intended to be employee parking. So these convenient spaces that are really adjacent to the building on either side would be customer. So it was a less of a concern if somebody was parked here getting air and blocking a view.
Oh, okay.
And then we shortened this, this striping over here, so this didn't interfere with it as well. So there's adequate space here, and it's basically what it is today.
And it doesn't block cars entering from the, from the south on North DeBonne?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It has relocated at this curb cut is, they're in the same position they are today.
Well, that's where the pumps are now?
Yes, yep, exactly. We just, we just shifted the, the parking spaces over in the reworking of this to not interfere with it.
Okay. And number 11 was they had a concern with the snow storage area being not wide enough.
Storage area is all throughout the whole area. In, in any areas that there was a, a chance that we couldn't put snow storage, we removed them from the plan. So all the areas that we show are adequate.
It's our, it's our policy, you know, in, you know, big snowstorms where they're just, you know, like everywhere else, when there's not enough room on the property, we haul it away.
Yep, right.
Okay, yeah, those are the two that caught my eye. Okay. Thanks. Just gonna ask you to, yeah, unshare it. Thanks.
You want to see the, the override again, or we don't have that?
Oh, is the ZBA override?
Do we need to go back to this document?
I mean, I have it. I don't know if anybody else wants it up.
Right, I'll stop you.
Okay, if there's no other comments, I would proceed with closing the public hearing. Any objection?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so Dan, how do we proceed from here? We, are we, we're voting?
I'll leave it up to you, but here's what needs to be done.
Okay.
Resolution overriding the adverse GML comments.
Resolution to consider granting the special permit for the fast food. Number three, resolution for the parking waiver. Number four, resolution for site plan. Now, does anyone think it's a good idea for us to spend the next hour and a half doing those for resolution?
Why would it take so long?
This entire endeavor has taken a long time. I don't know why it would change.
So we can do the resolution and vote next meeting? Is that what you're implying, Dan?
Okay. Suzanne, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I'm not saying anything.
Well, I can say in other boards that I work with, they'll authorize me or the attorney to draft resolutions to come back so that you review them and then you adopt them the following month.
I think for this application, that would be a great idea.
So I think this may be the first one for some of us, but what is the process for overriding or drafting the resolution for overriding the G M L comments? Some of we have to write the resolution?
So so I would.
It's gonna have to be written no matter what.
Right.
So again, what's preventing us from just voting if we choose to to override the G M L?
So I would, right, so I would suggest you could vote tonight.
Basis.
Sorry, what?
You have to give the basis for the override.
Okay.
Or or bases plural for each override.
So how many comments or how many how many items on this list from the Rockland County? Do we have to, would we have to override?
I believe three or maybe four, correct, Ken?
Numbers one, two.
Well, I have one, two, five, six, nine, and ten. And the other, those six, nine, and ten, they're.
One, two, six, five, and ten. So that's five.
Six, five, nine, and ten.
Yeah, five.
Six.
One, two, five, six, nine, ten.
And five doesn't really apply because the fire department had changed it, but we still have to document it.
Still have to override. You could use that as the basis, obviously.
And we have a basis from their memo, I believe from November sixteen.
That will be the rationale for for closing the public hearing and waiting for the resolution to be drafted, just to push it off.
Direct staff to prepare. You could close the public hearing.
We already did. It's done. It's closed.
Direct, direct staff to prepare resolutions for consideration by the board at the next meeting. Because as Valerie pointed out, there, once you close the public hearing and seeker's been addressed, timeframes kick in in terms of when you have to take action by. I think it's sixty-two days, if I'm not mistaken. But at the, I don't know what the agenda's like. I think I'm assuming from Suzanne's reaction that the next meeting agenda is not light.
And what does February's agenda look like, Suzanne?
Well, we have a very, the, we have the school coming back, our building, which is a big one. Very big project. I enlightened that I can't speak till we hear from them, but I have a feeling one twenty-four will be back, the next application as well as ten South de Bonn. And I do know that there's one item coming from C D R C that might make the submission for next meeting as well. And typically, we don't take more than maybe four or five per application. We we don't. For meeting, thank you. Because alternatively, we don't have the time to do two meetings per month. So that's why I try to limit it to four, possibly five if there's one short one. But whatever you all decide.
Then what happens if the sixty days passes? Can we, if something comes up like, it's a busy month or something, and we have to extend it a little bit more?
We would need the applicant's consent. Otherwise, they could get what's called default approval.
Another, Dan, would you also, would you object if they vote tonight? But then we provide the details in the resolution and they go through the resolution so that the vote is there on the record, but maybe not all of the details in the resolution?
I I'm concerned about that because you're, in essence, they'd be voting on things that would appear in a resolution that they really didn't have any input on and or any prior definitive knowledge about.
So then maybe it sounds like. Maybe it's, maybe it sounds like then they just vote tonight. You know, we could kind of go through some of the conditions and then the overrides, we could refer to the November sixteenth memo.
Or we leave the meeting.
No, because the overrides have to come first. Otherwise, there's nothing to approve.
No, I understand that, but I think we have the sixteen. I mean, I'm just saying, we might, I think we have the sixteen memo available.
You have the what memo?
The sixteen memo.
It was the memo that was submitted and for the November meeting that I re-put in everyone's packet for this meeting because I didn't know if everybody kept their packet.
You're referring to the to the responses from?
Spocko for, yes, this Spocko response dated November sixteen.
Yeah, we have that. We have that in our packet here.
Yeah, I put it back in everybody's packet.
I'd be inclined to get get this over with tonight personally.
Okay, let me throw this out. Yeah. Taking the zoning board overrides that are applicable here, I think the six that are applicable here. Read those and see if you don't agree and just adopt those as yours. Your basis. The legal profession, we have a different term.
We're allowed to borrow and it's not copyrighted, so.
Correct.
I have no problem with that.
Do we have that document?
We we.
I don't have that. No, I don't have that document.
The chairman said he had it.
I thought I had it.
I believe you have the overrides for one twenty-four for the next application.
Is that right? I thought I just had it.
No, you have the Z B A one from Stage Street that received it in two thousand and twenty-one. Look at the top of the the first paragraph of it.
Aren't those documents online?
No.
You're right. Right, I was looking for the wrong one.
That's okay.
It's one twenty-four, Route fifty-nine.
It's for the next application.
That means we have to leave the public hearing open?
No.
We already closed it. But are these documents online? Can we just pull them up?
No, I don't have them online. No.
Do you guys have?
Susan, is that the, I'm sorry, is that the May twenty-sixth?
May twenty-sixth.
That would be more recent, wouldn't it?
No, I don't, I don't have access to that.
It was, it was the zoning board.
Yeah, it was the zoning board. I think that was back in October. I don't have that.
It was the one that Spocko responded to.
I don't have that with me because I'm not in the office. I'm sorry.
I could put it up on the screen if you think it's the right one.
That's, that's up to.
Yeah, you go ahead. Yeah. So I want maybe it was just good Suzanne could email to all of us.
I could email to Suzanne. So this is the, this was the Spocko response.
We have that.
No, this is May twenty-sixth.
The zoning board meetings is very similar. The other one was for the planning.
This is the meeting where they over, where they overrode the.
Different.
But but that's not necessarily what they said as their basis for their override.
He's looking for the Z B A resolution.
Yes, I don't have that handy to give to everyone. All right, whatever you all decide.
I'm still inclined to go forward, go forward with it rather than have them come back unnecessarily. But I'm open to suggestions.
Seems to me we have quite a number of steps to go through to get through that.
Yes, there's a lot of steps.
And what? In deference to the other applicants, I'm not.
That's for the record, the February meeting, the applicant that's on is religious applicant, so that always goes first. I just wanted to point that out.
All right, that's gonna be a long one. Okay.
I just letting you all know.
Suzanne, wild guess on your part.
Yeah.
What month do you think you would have circulated the minutes or the resolution?
I I don't know if I did it in December. I think it was December. I don't recall.
It would be in our email from something.
Wouldn't have that. You wouldn't have that, Russell.
Sorry.
And I wouldn't have it either.
No, Dan would have it. The the planning board would not have it, Dan.
Okay. So you're saying December?
I think.
Suzanne, when is the, what's the date of the March planning board meeting?
Okay, well, the February meeting is the twenty-fourth, the March meeting is March twenty-fourth. I'm not saying they can't be on February twenty-fourth. I'm just letting the everyone know that other, the other application was adjourned to that date. That being said, I have not received anything for submittal, and there were quite a number of items that they had to follow up on from the prior meeting. So I I can't anticipate if there was traffic study, there were letters from the water source and things of that sort. I don't know if they've sorted all that out and still plan on being on that agenda or not.
I think it affects you.
So I I I mean, all I can tell you is that in December, it was adjourned to February. Whether or not they plan on state, it's very, they very well may be looking at postponing that and asking for another adjournment. It's very, very possible because of the number of items that needed to be done. And and Lou, Dan, Eve, and Valerie, you've seen those memos.
Yep.
Of what I'm talking about. I don't know if it was, if if it's feasible that they could get that accomplished by February submission, and technically, they would be submitting within two weeks.
Okay, Suzanne, Dan, it's one more time. If we do push this off. So what do we do tonight? We're done for tonight with this application?
No, you're going to do a resolution directing village, the village professionals to draft for the board's consideration. Proposed resolutions with regard to Dunkin' Donuts relating to G M L overrides. Special permit for fast food. The resolution with regard to parking waiver and resolution with regard to final site plan approval for the board's consideration at the next planning board meeting on February what?
February twenty-first, fourth, and I think we should say that it could be either in person at the village or possibly by by Zoom and to check the village website. Because I don't know what could happen.
This is Kim Moran. If it's in person, will that change the date? Or would it be the same date?
No.
Same date.
It's the same date, the twenty-fourth. It's just right now, the governor's extension is only to February fifteenth. If that's not extended, we're in person, but there's a chance that it could be remote if she extends it or it is extended, the legislature, whoever extends it. So yeah, it would be the same day. It's just which vehicle via remote or in person. So I'd rather say both to cover ourselves. Don't you agree, Dan?
Yeah.
I think we've been doing that anyway, so.
Yes.
Yeah, and if you guys draft the resolutions in the interim, would that, that would expedite things at the next meeting?
Yeah, just read the resolution and vote. I would normally do it at the meeting, but I think there's really a lot here, especially with the overrides and everything else that's got to be done.
Okay.
Excuse me, can I ask a question? Uh, Dan, at the Z B A meeting that we attended, we had the same issue. And.
Which part?
At the Z B A on the on the override, the G M L overrides. And I thought the way we handled, because they had the same problem, because we have multiple, we had a lot more. It was what sixteen, eighteen of them, Susan versus four or five. And I thought what they did was basically adopted the comments that were in the Steve Spocko responses, and then they globally agreed to all those at one time. So they really only just had a vote once, if I recall.
Dave, you know what the problem is? You absolutely may be right.
Oh.
No one here knows for sure. Because we don't have. It may turn out your verbatim right. But we don't, we can't. We have, I've tried everything.
No, no, I I understand that. Is it, but can't can't this board vote the same way is the is the, instead of adopting what the Z B A did? This board could vote on the five all at one time, like the Z B A did on the whole sixteen, just acknowledging you're in agreement with the responses in the Steve Spocko comments to each one of those five conditions versus the Z B A had like sixteen of them, but they only voted once. It could, so can this board do that same effort?
I I would have no objection to that.
That might be an efficient way to do it. We just read those five, and if you're in agreement, I mean, I can't tell you how to vote, but if you're in agreement.
That's okay to vote once on all, I think it was five or six?
No, we then we'd have to do it for, we still have to do.
You have to do it for special permit. You have to do it for fast food. You have to do it for site plan to do it for each category.
Yeah, you listen, you're right, you listen, but there's different votes. Then you vote on each one, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, sorry, I was muted.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you heard, I can't hear you.
Yeah, I was muted. So what does everybody else think? And I've never done this before with the override of the G M Ls. I don't really know how long these things take, so.
You actually did it with the Central U T A.
You did. You did it with 130 Stage Street.
No, he wasn't there for one. I don't think he was there for one.
June 24th, it was approved.
I don't remember those taking so long. Did it take so long? But I mean, we've we've been taking along talking about it.
I I know, that's exactly. And we didn't have the ZBA ones in front of us when we went over 130, I can tell you that.
I don't remember. I certainly don't remember how many there were, but. Okay, are you waiting for me to make a decision?
Yeah.
Okay, so I would, I'm gonna decide then to to go with Dan's. To Dan's idea to, the professionals will.
I gotta give.
Valerie credit.
Said she said it before I did, so it's actually Val.
Okay.
About an hour ago.
Exactly.
Okay, so we're gonna go that route then.
So you're making a motion to. Okay.
Yeah, I make the motion.
I need a second.
Proceed as then. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so. We already closed the public hearing.
Yes, you close the public. To continue the application.
No, we don't have to continue.
We don't have to.
Show up next month.
Directed, you did a resolution directing. The village professionals to prepare resolutions. For for the four resolutions. For your consideration at the next board meeting with a date. And time certain and with. Both the. Virtual and the possibility of in person being. Considered within that resolution. Got it?
I got it.
And this is Ken Moran. Would you want our input for the resolutions for your consideration?
10. If Dave is right, I may steal every word of Spuraco's. Letter. So in essence, yes.
Okay. And we'll do the same for the special permit.
Yeah.
Make some suggestions on that. Basically, the issues in a special permit are are the the issues we've addressed already going through the review for the. Traffic and the other items that were reviewed by the ZBA and the planning board. Think all the issues have been reviewed.
Okay.
Okay, so you guys.
Why don't you guys see if you can't finalize your. Lisa, not Lisa, is is an agreement in the interim too. So that I could have something to review.
Okay, well, yes, I imagine the property owner wants to have their attorney prepare and then we'll review it.
Yeah. Right. Well, we can get as much done. At the same time.
We have no objections to that. We'd like to. Get everything wrapped up next meeting.
Okay, great. See you then.
Okay, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Right, thank you.
And Dave, I'm sure you're right.
All right, the next application is the public hearing. For Stage Street, 124 Route 59 LLC at 124 Route 59. For an office warehouse building for an amended site plan. And we have Paul Baum, the applicant's attorney, Rachel Burris, their engineer, and I am not exactly sure who else is on.
Believe Mr. Turco's on.
Oh, now now I see him. Hi, Mr. Turco, how are you? Okay.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I appreciate the board's patience. I know you have another matter on and and you've been going for a few hours. What our purpose here tonight is to come and reintroduce this project that was first before the board back in 2019. But before I even knew that, let me introduce myself again. I'm Paul Baum. I'm the attorney for the applicant. LLC, yeah, the firm of Sarajin and Baum, P LLC, thank you. Anyway. So stepping back, we were first before the board 2019 and the project was a little bit bigger. The board. Adjourned us without date and sent us off to the zoning board of appeals for us to get our variances. While we before the zoning board of appeals. We modified the plans to. To to address a lot of comments by neighbor and property owners. And and we eventually got all our variances from the zoning board of appeals as well as an override of the Rockland County disapproval of the application. So. I know this project is due to to many of the board members that were not here in 2019. So the purpose of coming here is sort of reintroduce the project. Rachel Burris is here and she's gonna walk you through the design elements of the project. And and then we want to move on to discussions of the general municipal law and secret issues. But so 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 this says the project was before you, one of the buildings was eliminated. Buffer to the rear was expanded. We have an extensive landscaping plan. We are looking for two waivers from the planning board. One is for parking stall lane from 19 feet to 18 feet. And another one is for a loading berth size from a 10 by 40 to a 14 by 18 loading berth. This is a small warehouse project. It's on the south side of. Route 59 and it's just west of Stage Street. It consists of only about 5,600 square feet of warehousing. There's also a possibility up to 400 square foot of accessory office space within those warehouses for the. The the operators of the facility. So. I'd like to introduce Rachel Burris to sort of just walk you through the project and if she could share her screen and. Go through the design elements and then we can, you know, maybe speak about your consultants, memos and 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 move on to some of the other issues. So I'd like to introduce Rachel Burris to the board, which I'm sure you're all familiar. You're good.
I don't know why I was working. So I shared the screen that chose the property in question. So this is 124 Route 59. You may recall that previously we were approved for 130 Route 59. That was a separate project, even though. The applicant is the is the same, they, there is a parcel in the middle that is not owned by. The applicant, which was why the this parcel could not be incorporated with the 130 Route 59 development. This property in the middle is still owned by Mr. Hirsch. In 2019, we were before the planning board. A couple of people are saying that at that time, we. Were looking at a little at a more intense plan with more warehouse space and less. Buffer in the back. We were gonna be closer to this property. This piece behind is the. Lackawanna. Residents is the townhouses on Lackawanna. When we were at the ZBA, we worked a lot. We, you know, we've had comments, we had feedback, we took the information that we were receiving from the neighbors and the board. And we were able to reduce the the amount of warehouse space. There is 50 feet in the rear, so there's a 25 foot buffer. That means that that 25 feet is just landscaped. And then there's another 25 feet. This, we did not want to have a full 50 foot buffer because there's going to be drainage in this area. And if it was a buffer, it needs to be landscaped. It didn't allow the landscape, it didn't allow for the drainage. With this configuration, there is a protected area. This was the balance that we worked out with. The ZBA and then we were receive the variances. To have this 25 feet in the rear and the 25 foot up back. The there will be, this is the turnaround that meets the fire code from the international fire code. There's two buildings, two warehouse buildings with parking in front of that of each of them. They have one loading dock on each. They're labeled as loading. And we've tried to provide as much parking as we can based on limited size of the property. We have a note on the plan about the size of the trucks that are permitted to access the property based on the size. It's a unique property. It's only about 80 feet wide, which is fairly narrow and that played a part in how it had to be developed. We've worked on sewer, water, drainage, those factors. And those are all part of seeker and traffic studies were provided previously. Along the way, and that is also part of the seeker review. So this is a small warehouse. It's not going to create. An amount of traffic, but obviously any change is something that gets evaluated and look that. I think that about covers it. I'd say like the biggest things to keep in mind are there is this protected area in the back. And that the warehouse space has been reduced and we're reduced to only two tenants, where previously there were additional tenants. By only having two warehouses and two tenants also limits the amount of in and out of traffic. Is there anything else, Paulie, to go over? Otherwise, if there's any questions, we can start with questions. Do you want me to keep the screen on or is it easier for the board members to take it down?
Maybe for now, just keep it up. You were saying something, Mr. Baum?
No, no, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, sorry. So what's there now?
Nothing. There wasn't, there was an old building. It's been removed. When the survey was completed several years ago, there was still. Structure on the site. It has since been removed. This property that I'm showing you is the 130 Route 59. This is the one that had the had a. It looked like a house, but it was actually an office and it was for a photography studio. And that had had a previous site plan approval. This is the one that you had reviewed previously. Then this middle lot is the residence of Mr. Hirsch. And then there's a parking lot on this side. This is a commercial part, a commercial person.
Happened to have a rendering of what you initially submitted, so we could see the difference between.
I do. Okay. Did it switch to a different one?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, sometimes with the screen share, I don't know. It's hard to know what everybody else is seeing. So the original had, we were less than 30 feet in the rear. And we had a larger, two larger warehouses, but this was divided, they were trying to divide into three and four units. The total is seven occupants. So that has been reduced by going back, bring, we're now at 50 feet in the rear and 25 feet of that is protected. And having. Fewer tenants will also reduce. The impact. So this is the older plan with less in the back. And the bigger units. And then this is the plan now where we have 50 feet in the back and these two unit, two units, and they're reduced in size.
Thank you.
I I do want to point out to the board that by by making these changes to the plan, when we before the the zoning board of appeals, it eliminated. The need for a couple of variances and reduce the intensity of a couple of the other variances. So. It was a significant change in terms of compliance with the zoning law and. And the zoning board gave us all the variances that we requested.
Is there any fencing or or anything between? I don't know what the property between your two is. Like, so you have 129.
Along this side, you mean?
Yeah, is that, I guess that's the eastern border.
Yes, so there is a small retaining wall and let's see if we have the if I have the landscaping plan pulled up. So we are close, they're not showing a fence at this time. If that's something, we can certainly look at that. But at this time, it was it was not proposed.
Okay, I'm just thinking in terms of like. Well, noise possibly or lights from headlights just inter, you know. Impacting quality of life for the current resident.
We can certainly consider that. That was never an issue that was raised before the zoning board. The zoning board didn't. Didn't request us to do anything, but if the planning board's interested in seeing some sort of screening. We can certainly take that into consideration and see if we can fit it in there. But I do want to point out that this is a laboratory office zone. So this this use is appropriate to the zone. And we've tried to develop it in a way that's. Takes into the concerns of the neighbors as expressed to many of the public hearings that we had before the zoning board of appeals. So we feel the project has evolved where, you know, it's relatively in final form. And we can certainly take any additional screening considerations that the board wants to discuss.
I appreciate. The induction in size, the increase in the buffer, just trying to think, you know, in my head, how can I, you know. How can I rationalize an override from a disapproval for the GML, that type thing? I think if we could increase the. The or decrease the impact to the neighbor any further, because that's, you're kind of right on the. I don't I don't recall exactly what the variance was. I don't know if it's zero, but. It's pretty minimal between the two properties. Is that correct?
Yeah, it it it's zero feet, but that's to the property to the to the west. That that's where the zero foot side yard variance was granted. And and I don't think.
Yeah, that's on this side.
Yeah. We we did not need a a total side setback variance that was. That was one of the variances that was, I think, eliminated. Because of the design change and we're now providing 45 feet. So we meet with regard to the property owner to the to the east. We meet the total side setback requirement and the and the setback requirement for that that property.
And that was one of the things that when we were doing the original design, we kept the buildings on this side of the property so that it was closer to the existing. Commercial use and further away from the residence.
That's delineated from the property line to the structure. Is that what that is that?
The 45 feet is from the, yeah, from the building to the property line. And then on this side, it's on the building is proposed to be along the property line. For a zero setback.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, so let's hear from, uh, consultants. It's Valerie here. Can't see anybody. There we go.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, I wanted to just touch base first of all with Seeker. Um, I know Paul mentioned that I'm recommending that this take similar, um, uh, similar track as we did with one thirty Stage Street where we had the applicant just sort of update the EAF part one to reflect the new um, plans. And then also next month, I can come back with a part two for the board's consideration and then the board can consider uh, looking at a potential negative declaration. Um, after you review the part two. Um, the other couple of things de- dealing with the site plan itself, um, I think there are some, uh, comments and concerns that have been raised from some of the um, letters from like fire department. So if the applicant can address those for next month. And then also in terms of, um, the other thing I just wanted to note was that lighting, um, as was also raised, that just making sure that those in the lighting adheres to the requirements of the village code. And then signage. If there's any additional signage that's necessary for the site, please provide that as well.
Um, just for the fire department's letter, um, I'm sorry, I didn't mention it before. I spoke with the representative from the fire department and, um, we have, we went over the fact that the turnaround is provided based on the requirements of the fire code. And he said that he would be okay with it as long as we straight the turnaround portion so that there is no parking. Um, share this real quick again, just a point where I'm talking about. Um. So in this piece here, so theoretically with the way the fire truck turnaround is provided, it's like they could pull in here back into here and then pull out straight like a K-turn. So they would like this section to be straight as fire striping and have signage for no parking. We agree to that and, um, on the phone with Mr. Hawke, he accepted that that would be sufficient. Um. In regards to providing what they would require. Um, and I think in his letter, he mentioned that um, striping and signage would be appropriate. Um. So while they would, they would love to have a bigger turnaround, but the property is only eighty feet wide, so we can only do so much and this met them, didn't meet the requirements of the fire code.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was good again. Anything else, Valerie?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay, thanks. Eve?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I did prepare a brief report. I'll just, um, touch upon some of the highlights. Uh, the report's dated January twenty-fourth. I believe you all have a copy. I noted item one, they did now accommodate the four hundred square feet of proposed office space. And the parking calculations reflect that. So there's a total of eight spaces required and eight spaces have been provided, so there is not any parking variance being sought. As Mr. Baum noted, um, there is a waiver being sought for the parking stall size and the, um, loading berth size. With the slight reduction being required for parking of only one foot, but more of a substantial requirement being sought for loading. There was in the narrative provided, uh, comment noted that the size of the vehicles accessing the site will be limited. Uh, so that's something that the board should consider. Uh, in terms of signage, they did show a proposed sign. Um, it wasn't labeled in terms of distance from the curb line, but it appeared when I scaled it that was in a proper location. It just didn't seem that the orientation was very conducive to view it when you're traveling east. So that's something the applicant may want to consider. And as Valerie noted, details of the sign should be provided. Um. Number seven is regarding the sight line. Again, they, the applicant noted in the narrative that the traffic plan had this information. So I'm just asking if in fact the traffic plan has the information and that should be submitted as part of the plan set. Number eight was regarding wheel turning and that's been provided and that appears to work well. Uh, number nine's regarding, uh, water service and yes, there will be a new hot box and that has been shown on the plan. The sanitary plan, uh, the sanitary pump station has to be approved by Rockland County Sewer District number one and the town of Ramapo. So that's pretty standard. Number eleven is regarding the infiltration, infiltration system and, um, stormwater calculations. I, I don't recall, uh, Rachel, you'll have to refresh my memory if you did submit calculations. If you did, I'll go search for them, but if you didn't, please provide them. Stormwater maintenance agreement will be required as usual. Um, number fourteen is floor elevations. I see that you do have ADA stalls, but it's not sho, it's not clearly shown where the doorway openings are. So if they can be shown on the plan, that would be helpful. A landscape plan has been submitted and we generally defer to the village planner for review of that. Um, regarding the impact on the neighbors as was touched upon, I guess by Mr. Hawk earlier in the, in the meeting. It appears that though the setbacks are sufficient, the limit of disturbance is immediately adjacent to the property line. So there should be some consideration given to the impact on the neighbor, the impact on the neighbor's tree and perhaps some compensation, either a fence or additional landscaping, perhaps on the neighbor's property if he would agree to it. But I would agree that the impact to the adjoining residential neighbor should be, um, better addressed. Lighting plan has been provided, but due to the con, the erosion control measures and the lighting plan being on the same plan, it was a little bit difficult to read, so that should be clarified. Uh, trash enclosures is shown. That's great. Um, number nineteen goes back to the retaining wall as we discussed earlier. Due to the retaining wall being right on the property line and dropping off, it's, it's a low retaining wall, but even so, the vehicles backing out of the parking stalls would have to back out into that area. I was suggesting a guardrail or a fence of something of that nature, just to give them a visual warning that they're approaching the wall and to prevent vehicles from going over. And I would ask that, um, since this is along the Route fifty-nine corridor, that sidewalks be continued along the front of the property. As we are trying to make Route fifty-nine a little bit more pedestrian friendly as we have a lot of people walking along this corridor. Uh, that concludes my comments. Thank you.
The applicant want to respond to any of that?
No, um, most of these comments, um, are, are straightforward. We really have no objections to them. We'll modify the plans and address all these comments. Although I, I would like some clarification just on, um, a couple of issues, I guess, in, uh, uh, Eve's memo. Um, in, in, in one, she mentions that it's recommended that the applicant provide a response memorandum to the county's June twenty-six, two thousand nineteen GML review letter. And, uh, it's a good idea. We'll, we'll do that, but my, I guess my question was, was this new application resubmitted to the county for a new GML review?
Um, no, I asked a question when you submitted if I should be doing that. Uh, because it was submitted when he went to ZBA with the changes. But I do it for planning. If you want, I will send it out tomorrow.
Yeah, I, I, I didn't know whether that was what the board's intent was, is to get in, you know, have the G, have the county look at it again and write a new letter. It, it didn't help before the zoning board of appeals. They disapproved the old plan and they disapproved the revised plan.
Right.
Um, so I, I don't know if it's going to help, but if the board um, wants to get an updated GML, I would, you know, ask that it be done now so that we'll have comments, new comments back from the next time we come before you. So, uh, I would like to, you know, get that squared away with the board as to how you want to handle the, uh, the GML review, whether you're going to stand on what was done in two thousand nineteen of the old plan or whether you're going to ask for a new review of this revised plan that we've submitted. Think it would make sense to do it, send it in again, wouldn't you?
All right, so, but I'm going to send it, Paul, with the changes from today or use one of the plans that you previously submitted.
Um. Use the plan that we've submitted that, you, you know, we've given to the.
For the meeting today, because I do have an extra one. All right, I'll, I'll mail it out tomorrow.
Okay, good, thank you.
Hmm.
Um, and then the only other issue that I really wanted to advance was the, the, the secret issue. Um, as Valerie indicated and I indicated, the, when the board looked at this in two thousand nineteen, they decided to do an uncoordinated review. They declared themselves lead agency. At that time, the, um, planner, um, submitted a, a proposed part two to the board that was never formally adopted. We did respond to that part two with the part three as part of this submission. But now Valerie is requesting that we, um, update our, our part one as well as the part two EAF. Um. Obviously, the, any impacts are going to be less as a result of our revisions. And I was just wondering whether that's something that's necessary and that if the board could maybe adopt the part two EAF tonight and and, um, be ready to, uh, address the, you know, the secret issues and possibly render a negative declaration based upon our part three.
So I was just, um, my position is that I think it'd be good for the record to have it, everything updated to the current plan at this point in time. The applicant has to come back next month, no matter what, so it's not really delaying the applicant anymore, but it helps, uh, with your actual record for the property. And this is similar to what we did at one thirty Stage Street.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that, that should be easy enough. I think the changes are very insignificant. And, um, so we'll, we'll submit the revised part one and, um, we'll submit. I guess we'll submit a part three based upon the draft that was done in two thousand nine, Valerie, or do you intend to, um, prepare a, a new part two for the board to consider?
So I can, uh, I can take a look at the, I can prepare a new part two for the board to consider. I think in terms of the memo that you provided, I, I would just recommend that you take that same memo and if there's any other additional environmental issues that get brought up tonight for public comment, then you can add those to the memo as well. And that could be the basis for your, the part three, which ultimately they'll do, uh, the board will do a negative declaration for.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, if there's nothing further, Suzanne, anybody have their hands up? Should we open it up to the public?
Um, I need you to open the, uh, motion.
Are you ready for that?
Yeah.
Make a motion to open the public hearing. For.
Second.
One twenty-four.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. If anyone would like to say anything, please raise your hand. You have three minutes to speak. Hold on, I'm going through. Uh. Whoops. I don't see any.
Over here.
Josh wants to speak, it looks like.
Oh, go ahead, Josh. I'm sorry.
Yes, hi, good afternoon. My name's Josh Lesa. I own the property on one twenty Route fifty-nine, right next door to this. My only concern is it was put on the entire layout of the property. Now it's, they're, one, they're proposing to do a warehouse next to the property. Our property is a professional office. And what I'm worried about, that it's going to change the entire field of, of my property and the surroundings. Now everything over there is professional office space as opposed to warehouse, which would mean trucks coming in and out at any given time as opposed to the calm feeling that it's now being that it's currently over there, which it's a professional, professional office strip. Um, all the other buildings until me are all offices or storefronts. That's it that I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next person is Richard's iPhone. Hello?
Looks like he's still muted.
I lost him.
I see him there. Richard's iPhone. You have to unmute yourself.
Hello?
Okay, now we can hear you, sir.
Okay, how you doing? Uh, good evening. My name is Richie O'Neil, thirty-one Lackawanna Drive, part of Indian Rock.
Okay.
Where the property goes in the back, it drops down to Indian Rock itself. There's a rock wall.
Mm-hmm.
Is the property going to be sloped from Route fifty-nine towards the back or is it going to be sloped from the back towards Route fifty-nine as far as drainage of the water on the driveway or roadway or the parking areas? And then they talked about, uh, I think Rachel referenced drainage in the back. The drainage is going to go where? Is it going to tie into a sewer somewhere or where is that going to go? Towards the back of the prime, where's the drainage? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um. Anyone else? Please raise your hand. I don't see anyone else. Nope, that's it.
Thank you, everybody. Is there anything the applicant would like to address after hearing the public?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, with regard to Mr. Lesher's comments, well, I understand that, you know, he's an office use. This use is, uh, is a permitted use in the zone. Um, the property, uh, to the east, that's also owned by my client, is also going to be warehouse office. This is warehouse with a small accessory office for the occupants. It is an entirely appropriate use and proper use for the zone. And, um, you know, it, it's not all, it's not only limited to, uh, to professional office along Route fifty-nine. So while I understand his concern, um, we are complying with the zoning code and we are consistent with the zoning. Uh, and I'll, I'll let Rachel respond to, um, uh, Richard's comments, um, regarding the drainage and sloping in the rear.
Uh, the property will continue to slope from fifty-nine towards Lackawanna, which is what it does in the current condition. Um, and the drainage is proposed to rely primarily on the infiltration and then in larger storm events, there will be also an overflow that goes to a riprap outlet. Um, a, uh, flare to end section with riprap protection. Um, but the majority of rain events are designed to infiltrate back into the ground rather than runoff. Uh, the overflow is primarily for larger rain events, um, and stormwater calculations were provided originally with our application back in two thousand nineteen. They will be updated as we proceed. Um, and actually they were over, it was, since everything's been reduced, it's even, it'll be less than what was proposed at that time. Um. And it'll be a better situation than that, but we meet the zero net increase and runoff requirements of the village. And that's part of our design.
And, and I would point out to the, I would point out to the board also that there's a, there's an existing rock wall that separates um, this property from the Indian Rock Townhouse development. Um, that's not going to be disturbed. We're going to have twenty-five feet of area after that wall that's going to remain in its natural state. And then the landscape plan calls for, you know, extensive variety of, uh, Norway spruce, um, and some, uh, eastern rosebuds and some other other types of shrubberies that'll create a nice, uh, dense uh, buffer that will, you know, shield noise and, uh, shield the visual impact from the building and also shield the lighting. So we think that all the. Potential impacts to the adjacent property owner are adequately mitigated with the proposed plan.
Thank you. John, anything to discuss? Questions?
No, I'm good. I'm good.
Anybody else?
One question, if I may. Was there, what was there before this? What was it always a a warehouse or is it something very new that it's coming there? Was it offices before?
No, no, it was a, it was, it was an old house that was on the property that was abandoned, that was falling in disrepair. And the applicant raised the the building to clear it, so right now the property is vacant.
I'm just saying, maybe Mr. Mr. Lester does have a point that their trucks coming in and out, a lot of pedestrians or. People are working those buildings, walking around there, the trucks coming in and out of that place. Is there's a safety concern or does we're not worried about that?
I I don't think there's a safety, a safety concern. We're talking about, you know, very small warehousing operation. There's going to be smaller trucks. It's not going to be extensive traffic. We have submitted the traffic report and the traffic report indicates that there's going to be no. Significant impacts as a result of the traffic that's been generated by this project. The traffic is not anymore that if if we made that an office building and you had cars coming in and out of there all day long, the traffic impacts. Might be greater than what we're proposing right now, so.
I understand, I I. I understand that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm I'm sorry, Mr. My my last point is what we're proposing here is not going to have an impact of anything greater than we're allowed. As of right, I mean, I know this is a special permit use, but any other use that you have there is going to have the same or similar impacts. Whether it's an office building and you have delivery trucks coming in and FedEx trucks and and things of that nature. This warehouse is is not going to have extensive traffic in and out.
I understand. I was just worried about the big trucks coming in and out, something very new over there. Pedestrian cars are different trucks.
There is a note on the plan that limits the sizes of trucks that are permitted to enter the site, so they cannot have gigantic. You know, thirty foot long, thirty five foot long tractor trailers. They're not allowed on the property. They won't fit. It's not designed for that. So there is a note on the plan that specifies that.
All right. Will there be signage for that?
We will, we will add appropriate signage, but we're we're proposing to limit the size of trucks that are allowed to enter the site to no more than twenty feet. And, you know, the 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 tenants, the occupants of these premises will be told that they can't have, you know, large trucks coming in, so. We we think we'll be able to enforce it, and I know Mr. Turco is very interested in maintaining a very nice property, very first. First class appearance property, and and I'm sure he will make sure that. You know, those limitations on the size of trucks are enforced.
All right. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Well, we gotta close the public hearing. I'm assuming the applicant's gonna have to come back next month.
So we're not gonna close, are we? We're gonna continue it?
Yeah.
Okay. If we we're gonna continue it, Mr. Bum, you want to come back next month?
Yeah, I, we'd like to keep it moving because we've been away for so long because of the pandemic and and all the other delays. So at this stage, we we'd like to come back. We think we can make all the revisions and submit them, they're not significant, and. We can address all the, all the issues that have been raised.
Okay, so you think you'll have something ready at the February meeting?
I think so. And if we're, if we're not ready, we'll send a letter and we'll request a further adjournment, but but we hope to be ready.
Okay, either way, either way, we'll see you next month. Okay, so I make a motion to continue the public hearing. To date certain. Which is February twenty fourth, two thousand twenty two. Issue of one twenty four Route fifty nine, State Street Associates. Either via Zoom or in person. That is up to Governor Hokel. Have a second?
I'll second.
At nineteen hundred hours, you're seven P M., right? Ow.
Well, that that just for the record, that's an issue. If it's in person, I don't know if Dan can make it at seven, right, Dan? I think we have to do seven thirty.
Yep.
Oh, yeah? Okay, I didn't know that.
Seven thirty.
Yeah, the meetings were always seven thirty. We we went a half an hour earlier on both zoning and planning. Because of the number of applications and because it was via Zoom.
Hmm, okay, so I guess we don't have to say a time or seven o'clock if it's via Zoom, seven thirty if it's in person.
Yes.
Either way, we'll see you next month. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, members of the board.
Thank you.
Good night.
Yeah, we'll see you next month. Okay, but one more Suzanne, right?
One more, yes. The next application. Is the public hearing for ten South Debonne LLC at ten South Debonne for two office buildings. It's an amended site plan application for minor app, for minor modification. For for those of you who have been on the board for a while, this was the prior Allegro application. But now it's got a new owner and it it's changed its name and they've made some minor. Amended site plan modifications. And I believe the applicant's attorney, Amy Millie, is on and Justin Lim, their engineer.
Okay, so some of us are gonna need a little bit of a background here.
Yeah.
So. Ready? Go ahead.
Let me hope, let me hope I can provide it. Um, so this was a previously approved site plan. At ten South one Avenue or Street for a. Uh, basically two. Office buildings, one for medical office use and one for professional office use. This was debated and. The subject of a lot of scrutiny in the secret process before the previous board. Um, you know, the issues were traffic and. Actually, the biggest issue was traffic. I have to say that. Um, so it was a heavily debated site plan. It was ultimately approved. There were no variances involved. Um, there. The ultimate site plan that was approved was for two approximately twelve thousand foot. Office buildings on South one Avenue behind the Ramapo. Complex back there. And we're back here for reapproval. It went through, like I said, an extensive seeker process. And we're back for reapproval. The only changes that we have made. To this site plan. Are. The exterior architecture, which we think is actually nicer. And more pleasing than the previous iteration of the architecturals. And we also changed the grading slightly. And what that does is it allows more of the front elevation. To be exposed and allowing a little bit more light in and also a more balanced cut and fill analysis. So as Mr. Lim from Leonard Jackson Associates will explain to you shortly. Um, the changes that we've made minor are really only. For the better. They're actually an improvement to the previous site plan. So we did get an opinion from your planner, Ms. Minestra. That the board does not need to reestablish lead agency in this action. It was already done. Before. And. You can maintain that lead agency status. And what we are hoping that the board will do will reaffirm its previous secret declaration. We will have to return to the A R B, which we understand, not a problem. Um, but other than that. We did get a a flurry of. Comments today. We, I, you know, I'd be lying if I said we had the opportunity to go through them all. I haven't, but Mr. Lim actually has, and he's on the phone tonight. And so we can address them. And so what we'd like is to basically get a reapproval of this previously approved application. And to move forward with this office development. That will add ratables and, you know, and is in compliance with your zoning. Without any variances involved.
Mr. Lim? Way in?
Yes.
Do you want to share your screen?
Yeah, I'm here. Can I share a screen?
Yes, go ahead. I gave you permission.
Oh, okay, alright. Let me, let me start with the, hold on. Not this one. Okay, can you guys see the plan?
No.
No.
Alright, sorry. Hold on, hold on, okay.
Yeah, okay, it's come something.
Right now.
We don't see the plan yet. I just said. It says it's screen sharing.
Okay. The screen we shared.
There we go.
Okay, how about now?
Yes.
Alright, can I, let me see if I can make that bigger. Okay, can you guys see it bigger now?
No, it's if you could make it a little, yeah, that's better. Thank you.
Okay, good. Alright, so so this is the layout plan that we have here. I would like to go through the perimeter first, just to show the perimeter curbing. These lines here that I'm pointing to. They are identical to the previously approved plan. I think that there was last review by the planning board and granted final approval. In. Twenty eighteen, I believe.
Twenty eighteen.
Yeah, twenty eighteen, good, thank you. And 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 even including this entrance too, the configuration of it. And the traffic circulation around the building, everything else is all identical with. With exception of minor tweaking of the curb line with curves and maybe in some area widen it a little bit. To accommodate the truck turns and 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 rearrange the loading dock just a little bit at the same location though. Just so that we can accommodate the new architectural that we have. So that the board understand the old architectural was presented to us. To fit into the site plan, and it was designed with the entry on the front of the building over here. On the second floor. And coming around. The driveway. When you reach the other side of the building, we are, you are, we are at one floor below it. So inherently, because of the architectural, we have to design the site so that it's higher in the front and lower the back. And as a result, that the. Uh, front part of the building has two exposed. Floor, and I was only can afford windows on two floors. Now, the new owner decided that that is not a. Kind of like a user friendly building, because you you have a portion of the building that's kind of like back up against wall. No windows can be. Uh, I guess, you know. Included. In in the floor plan because of the 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 grade change. So so it asked me to look into it and see how we could. Design the building. So that we can have windows on all side. So what I did was. I'll I'll go to the grading plan later. So as we come in, the old plan, as you come in. You you get to the one end of the building and start gradually going up. In elevation and goes down. In elevation so that the end elevation of the two building in front of it are the same. Uh, and that that's how we get to the 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 elevation so we can get into the the front of the building. That's with the old design. Now with this new design, what I did was. I come into the site and as soon as I reached the first parking area, I slowed down in five percent. And get to the point that. You know, it's. Up to about here, I'm at about the same elevation throughout the site. From here to here in this area here, it's all at about the same elevation. And by doing that. I was allowed to have, you know, we we can afford to have windows. Uh, on on all side of the building. So that that's the only difference in terms of grading. Um, let me switch over to the, I guess, the grading plan. On. See how you do this. Okay, now, now this. This is the grading plan. Right, this this shows that that five percent slope coming down. And starting from this point.
There's gonna be anything changed.
I'm sorry?
I don't think we're seeing the same thing.
Well, this is a, this is a grading plan. I I mean, you know, it's it's hard to see the contour, but but I'm just describing to you what what's going on here.
You make it fill the screen?
I'm sorry.
I don't think it's the grading plan that's being shared.
Yeah, that looks like the site plan.
No, this is just a grading plan. Did this has elevation? We contours. Alright, so so starting from here is four forty three and going around it, again, you have four forty three over here. And and this area here.
Sorry, I interrupted. I'm still not following.
Sorry.
But we're not seeing the grading plan.
Not seeing the grading plan, okay. Why is it not doing? I'm seeing myself, let me see. This plan you can see, right?
Right, that's the, that's the screen we see.
Okay, now, how do I, how do I switch over to this one here, the second one?
Maybe if you go to view options?
Ah, this guy. I think this is it right here. Is it not?
It hasn't changed on the screen. Yeah, go to view options. It might be there. I don't know.
Uh.
This looks, this looks right. Is it drain? Yeah, this is it.
This one?
Yeah, but it's.
Okay, good.
We zoomed, we zoomed in too much.
Oh, okay, right. Um, let me zoom out a little bit.
That's much better.
Yeah, better, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, so. Where where was I? Four forty three, okay, we're coming in four forty, four forty three, and the entrance elevation is at about. Four, four, four fifty. Or so. So four forty three and at at this location here that we get down from the entrance. And similarly. At this location, we get to elevation four forty three. And the rest of the site. You're like up and down a little bit, say about four forty two or so. So from this point onwards. I can actually assign handicap parking anywhere I like, because it's just about like, you know, two percent or so slope. So it it's it's a very. User friendly site and plus two that we can have, we can afford to have windows. Of the three floors of the building for both buildings and all around it. Except for here, we have some retaining wall, but I do, we do have a sidewalk that we can walk around the building. And 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 and, you know, it it's a much better design. We we came out the concept first, we designed the site and an architect actually designed something that fits into the idea, and this is what we're looking at. Beside that, the traffic circulation is the same. We have a truck that analysis that demonstrated that we have. You can have fire truck going around the site without any problem. The drainage system is the same. Um, what else is there? The site actually. Came up a little bit compared to the old approved plan by about three feet. The reason why, because we, instead of coming up in front of the building. We actually go down. That's kind of. Kind of like. Uh, we have to adjust the 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 cut and fill volume and and so that we we don't have to either export material or import material into the site. We we like to use the native material and kind of balance on the site so they can have less traffic, truck in and out of site. I mean, the, on, on Devon Avenue and, and, and kind of create a traffic, you know, a problem there. So, and, and also it's more energy efficient by, by keeping the material on the site.
Does that mean that you're excavating the material out of part of it and just placing in other locations on the same?
Yes, yes, where we cut, we fill on the side. And, and the only thing to, to import are those pavement material and, and concrete and all those things, that, that, they are no choice, they have to bring in. So, so that's, that's where we're at with this site plan. As I said, this is about, I mean, if, if you don't pay attention, if you compare one plan, this plan here versus the old plan, you almost cannot tell the difference. I mean, the, the zoning numbers, the parking calculations, the same, the impervious surface actually dropped just a bit, a little bit, due to some, some curb work around the site. And, and that's about it.
And if I may, just to elaborate on Mr. Lim's comments, this is a reapproval of a previously approved site plan that underwent a full-blown seeker review, traffic studies, you know, every kind of secret analysis that you can think of. And all we're proposing is a change to the architectural on the outside, which I think will be an improvement, and some grading change, changes, which we also think will be an improvement. So just to clarify, this is not a new application, this is old, it was approved, and we'd like to get it reapproved and move forward with the project.
I have a question, two questions. One of my guesses is for Mr. Lim, if they're grading the, what is on the left side of the screen? So they're dropping it down around ten feet in the middle there?
This here, hold on, let me see, yeah. Compared, compared to existing condition, right?
Yeah, where it says four forty-four, smack in the middle.
Okay, let, let me, let me zoom in here, let me take a quick look, I'll tell the answer. Let's see here. Okay, right, right, say about here?
Yeah, right there.
Okay, hold on, let me zoom in a little bit more, can see the number.
Oh, that's, that's.
From four, yeah, from four fifty-three, was it? Yeah, yeah, it's about ten feet.
So do you require a retaining wall now?
Between the driveway. We always said the retaining wall here, it just that by doing this, the retaining wall got a bit higher, because we are actually effectively lowering the, the, the parking area in front of the building.
Right, so you need like an eleven-foot retaining wall there?
I have here, let me see here, I have seven and a half eleven, yeah, that's correct.
What, what was the height of the prior one?
Oh, ah, hold on, let me turn around, I have the, wait, do I have the old copy here? No, I don't have the old copy. The old one was, oh, by the way, this retaining wall here is, is the, rather, the face of the retaining wall is one that you look from the parking lot. From the street, you can't see anything. Okay, this is much higher, because the street level is at what? Five sixty or so, this is five sixty, yes, this is five sixty contour. So five sixty, and over at the location, we just look at the existing grade is five fifty-four, and we bring it down to five, I mean, four, sorry, four fifty-four to four forty-three. About, about ten feet or so. The, hold on, let, let me, let me take a look at the, the old plan. The old plan, okay, you know what, let, let me go by the finished grade old plan. Four fifty-three. Four fifty-three. Not this one, sorry. Where do you go? Sorry about that. Four forty-three, four forty-three, four, four, okay, so the, the, on the old plan, the first floor elevations that, four forty, now the first floor become four forty-three, which is about same as this. So from four forty, it's about, let me see, I four fifty-three. Fifty-three to fifty-five. It was, it was like maybe a couple of feet. In- instead of eleven feet, because we, we had dropped the elevation quite a bit.
So that's why you needed a retaining wall even in the?
Yeah, 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 I mean, I mean, to, to, to the, I guess, for someone who is looking from the street, it's, it's, it's like, you know, you, you, you go out into the site and, and kind of just abrupt drop, which is I think is better, because you have your vertical separation now much more than the, the previous version. It's, it's, it's in a, kind of in a hole.
Okay, is there a guardrail proposed?
Yeah, we, we're gonna put in all this safety features incorporated into the top of the retaining wall that we usually do, typically a four-foot chain link fence, black vinyl coated type, so that, you know, it doesn't look offensive. And, you know, coupled with landscaping, you shouldn't be, you know, any kind of eyesore.
Thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions?
Questions?
Any questions?
None for me, thanks.
So Mr. Lim, if you don't mind turning off your screen sharing.
Okay, let me close up this file.
Perfect, thank you.
No problem.
I'm just wondering, Eve, I think, there's a question for you. Do the safety requirements, the guardrail requirements change depending on the height of the drop?
If you have any drop that a vehicle could potentially go over, I'd say anything in excess of two feet, you would most definitely need a guide rail or a pedestrian chain link fence for pedestrian safety depending on the location of the wall. The only thing that would change the design of the guide rail or the speeds posted on the road. So since this is a residential development, the guide rail would, residential road, rather, the guide rail would be designed accordingly as opposed to highway guide rail, where the vehicles are a much greater speed, so the guide rail would be designed differently. So the short answer is no, if, if it's going to protect a vehicle at local speeds, whether it's gonna fall three feet or it's gonna fall eighteen feet, it's still the same design.
Anybody else? Mrs. Milley, can I ask you a quick question?
Of course.
Can you just very briefly run through the timeline again of this application? When you came before the planning board and?
I apologize that I don't have the original application date, but I do know the approval date was May in two thousand eighteen. I'm just trying to think, I probably got involved in this application in two thousand and sixteen. So it was quite a while that this application was going on, perhaps Suzanne could confirm for me?
Yes, I would say sixteen, and it was approved, like we said, May eighteen, site plan was signed November of eighteen.
Yeah.
I'm just curious what happened after that, why they didn't go forward with the project then?
Ah, the applicants for whatever reason, didn't have the funds, the means, or whatever to go, they sold it, and these are the new property owners, and they're willing to, they're ready, willing, and able to go forward with this.
So from what I understand, from a, a previous application that we saw maybe two months ago, then, the, the approval expires, right? If they don't get the?
Once it's approved in, in planning board, you have a year to get the, all these items together to get the site plan signed, and then the site plan is only good for three years from when it's signed. If you haven't started the, the construction, then you have to come back for reinstatement of the previously approved, but this is a modification to what was previously approved. So it's considered an amended site plan, correct, Amy?
Yes, I agree with Suzanne, yes, thank you.
I don't know, I don't know where Dan, oh, there, Dan is there.
Yeah, for whatever, for whatever it matters, I agree.
I didn't see you, I'm sorry.
Yeah. I mean, it, it still, it really has a, a dual approach, one, it's being amended, so that means that there are changes and that these type of changes require an amended site plan. And then by getting the amended site plan, if they're approved, they would be extending the prior, the prior approval date no longer is effective, it starts up again with the new approval.
I would actually point the board to, it's private, it's private, I'm sorry. We're all tired, it's prior approval in with the culinary depot site. So that was originally approved for culinary depot, we subsequently had it approved for something different. We came back, we had a couple changes to the exterior, maybe a couple of, you know, circulation changes or whatnot, we went back to the ARB, and this board relied on their prior secret determination and granted the amended site plan approval for, you know, the same use, just a different applicant.
So I'm still not perfectly clear on this, Dan, this is not a reinstatement of a prior approval?
It serves the perp, the same purpose, but it's being amended as well. So it's not the same approval. One is, listen, our time ran out, and we're not changing anything, and we need you to reinstate the approval. As a matter of fact, I think it's so ministerial, if I'm not mistaken, a public hearing isn't even required for that.
That's what we did with Panera Bread, is that right, Suzanne?
Yeah, we did a reinstatement with Panera.
And was it, we didn't have to do a new public hearing, did?
No, we did not, you're correct.
Okay.
Did not.
Yeah, but there were no cha- no changes with Panera.
There were no changes, it was just.
Absolutely, I, I, I'm just excited with having had, you know, effects of COVID.
I would, I would call this.
I, that my recollection hasn't been completely wiped out.
You're correct.
So, that made my night.
I would call this a reapproval with minor modifications.
Reapproval, I mean, reinstatement?
But regardless of what we'd like to call it, there's terminology built into the code that has to be followed. So it's how the code characterizes what you're seeking. And I think code characterizes it as a an amendment to Suzanne, help me out here.
To a previously approved site plan.
Yeah.
To a previously approved site.
So it's just the amendment?
Yes.
Yeah, and it has some.
And then should the board approve that? By doing that, the timed frames start all over again.
Right.
Okay. Okay, are there any comments from the, from Valerie?
So just, just a couple. First, to just talk a little bit about seeker. So the board, because the board already issued a negative declaration from the prior approval, and because the project itself, you know, is basically the same project except for some minor modifications, this board can reaffirm its prior negative declaration. If the board has any particular, even individual, like environmental concerns or something that you want the applicants to address, you can still have them address that, they can still then, you know, identify that it's under the same, it's under the threshold in which you, excuse me, which, in which you provided your initial negative declaration on, and so the negative declaration could still be reaffirmed. So based on the application that was submitted, based on the prior approvals, you know, my recommendation is that you could reaffirm the negative declaration if this board so chooses. The second thing is, in terms of the plan itself, as we all know that it's the same, basically the same plan, there's just a couple minor things that I just wanted to highlight. First was the landscaping plan, since that time period, the, there's one species on there that is considered like a tier-three established invasive species, so we're just recommending that particular species not be planted, it's the unanimous fortune. And then the other thing is the heights. We just, the site plan identifies a height of thirty feet for the two buildings, and we just want the applicant to provide elevations of the proposed office buildings to confirm that the office buildings will meet the required height of thirty feet based on the definition of height in the zoning code. Other than that, everything else. I'm, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm so sorry, I, I just, we're happy to do that.
Oh, okay, yeah, so other than that, that was, those are my only comments.
And doesn't it have to go to ARC, Valerie?
Ah, yes, yes, it will need to go to the architectural review board for recommendation.
Eve, anything?
Ah, yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I did take a look at the amended site plans, and I have a few comments. My first comment is regarding the submission itself, for some reason, all the sheets weren't provided, certain sheets were eliminated. So if you are coming in for amended site plan approval, the full site plan set should be submitted as it was submitted previously. Since you are amending the grading substantially, I was just inquiring if additional soil testing has been done yet. If there's any in the, on the, I guess, at the west side of the building is where you're lowering it substantially, and I didn't know if the soil testing was done to determine if there's any rock that might be hindering the grade change. Num sheet three A labels off-site drainage plan, but there isn't any off-site drainage improvement shown on that plan, so I was a little confused about that. Note four was the same as last time around, that additional soil testing may be needed in the area of the stormwater management system, and that could be done once construction has commenced. Number five, again, is a repeat, long-term maintenance agreement is needed. Number six is regarding the light poles, you may have to just reevaluate. Number six is regarding the light poles, um, you may have to just reevaluate the location of them to be located on the same plane as the parking, since you do have, um, substantial walls throughout the site. That becomes important that the lighting is at the same level as the parking. Number seven's repeat, um, item from last time regarding structural calculations, that's standard. Uh, number eight is just a point of clarification um, regarding the courtyard now, now that the buildings are um, fully exposed with three stories, it, it appears there's staircases in between that courtyard, so I wasn't sure where these stairs are leading to, if that's a leftover feature from the last building or if there is something that I'm missing. Number nine is doors on the east side of this structure, it seems like you have a very large parking field on the east side, but there's no easy access into your building. Uh, number ten is Tolman Fire Department requested a fire hydrant. Number eleven is, uh, soil erosion due to the high level of disturbance. Um, you do need a very robust soil erosion plan, especially because of the adjacent wetlands there. You want to be sure you don't have any adverse impact on the wetlands. The concrete washout area should be shown as it's noted in the SWP. And the last two issues, twelve and thirteen, are regarding the SWP P P. And there's a couple of minor modifications needed to that plan. So I don't know if you have the answers to any of those questions now, or is it something you need to think about?
Well, um, do, do, do Rutter do it now? I mean, this, uh, some of these comments, um, detail related, I would be happy to provide that to you. Um, and the, uh, the soil testing obviously need to be done, um, you know, just to make sure that you don't, don't run into a, a bedrock situation. That's a good suggestion. Uh, let me see, the off-site drainage, let me see. Off-site drain, okay, the off-site drainage plan, uh, actually shows some off-site area to the east side of the, uh, the project, which extend into the, uh, I guess the wetlands area. And, and the reason why it's extended out is so that we can project the hundred-foot buffer back from the wetland delineation back into the site just to, just to make sure that we don't encroach upon those buffer area, and we did not.
Uh, but you're not proposing drainage improvements, that's your rest, you're restoring the wetland buffer on the town property from what the plan says, you're not making a drainage improvement.
Correct, that, the name that I, I don't know, this are the names of, that, that we adopted from, from the approved plans. And I, I did not, uh, look, uh, into it, why is it called the drainage, uh, 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 off-site drainage plan, but maybe the name is just not appropriate for, for this, uh, you know, this sheet here, the one that we're showing. Um, it also shows some off-site, um, landscaping that we're doing. Right, in, 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 in the same area, just, just to enhance the, whatever the, the, um, the, the area that's off-site.
Well, that was required as a restoration because the property owner had encroached into the buffer, so part of your prior approval required an enhancement of the buffer area and a removal of the encroachment.
Right, all, all I'm saying is that I, I, I don't know a lot of, you know, some of these details of this project because I didn't handle it the last time, we, we're just keeping it the way it is, you know, and showing it as, as it is. And e- even the name, we just carried over from what it was, uh, named before.
Um, okay, so you're not proposing any other additional stormwater management improvements, it's
Correct.
Same as before.
Yep, that's correct, no problem.
Clarifies it, thank you.
Okay, uh, test pit, we, we talk about that, uh.
Yeah, so in terms of these, the, um, stormwater management system, that's typically done during construction and that's not a problem. In terms of evaluating the depth to bedrock, that's really up to you. So if you do encounter bedrock and it changes your plan in any me, in any way, then you once again have to come back to the board, but that's something, you know, that's a determination you guys can make. If you feel comfortable that the design will work, then you can proceed.
Okay, we'll keep that in mind. Um, number, where are we now? Number four, not, number five, long-term maintenance agreement, uh, no problem, we'll provide that. Um, yeah, I guess we relocate in the SWP, uh, location, the proposed light pole, uh, is review, we'll do that. Regarding the light pole, just to make sure that it's, 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 it's analyzed on, on the correct, uh, plane or elevation. Uh, number seven, that's a standard item, so what we usually do is to have the, um, manufacturer and slash the installer, um, have the, um, retaining wall system, uh, come with the, uh, uh, structure engineer design and certification uh, prior to construction. I guess that, there's something that you would like to review be, before we, uh, I mean, before it's constructed, right, Eve?
No, it says it's required to be submitted to the building department.
Oh, okay, all right, that's fine. We'll make sure they submit to the, uh, submit to the building department. Uh, so the, the grading of the courtyard, well, we'll clarify that because we, when, when I started working on the grading, the, the architectural, uh, plans, like, actually it's sketchy. And as, as we get into more detail, we, we, we'll make sure that, that's, that's, um, you know, addressed, especially where, where the steps are. And, and make sure that you have enough length to get to whatever elevation it'd get to. Uh, let me see, number nine, the proposed door on the east side of the structure, although show, thi- this, we, we have to check with the architect. Um, I, I'm only showing the doors where I was told to, to, um, to show, because there are doors there. Uh, let, let, let me check with them, uh.
Do you have the architectural plan available to share?
I have, let me see here. I think I do, hon. Can I have the, uh, let me see, the share screen again, okay, good. Now, where is it now? Gosh.
Maybe stop and make a suggestion because I know this is a long meeting and everybody's tired. Um, we have to go to ARB, everybody agrees on that, right? Because we're changing the external look of the building.
Yeah.
Um, the seeker and the comments really shouldn't change unless it relates to the architecturals of the building or drainage, I, I'm sorry, or the grading, because that's the only thing we're changing. So would it make sense to basically, you know, because we got a lot of these comments today, would it make sense to have a tack meeting, uh, go over these items with you, um, Eve, Valerie and company, and go to the ARB and come back next month? And, you know, my goal, obviously, is to have the board reaffirm its prior seeker uh, determination because really nothing much has, has changed. Does that sound like a reasonable suggestion?
Well, can I just point out that this is on for a public hearing?
Yeah, no, I, you're gonna open it up to comments.
Yeah.
Okay, are we ready to open up the comments? We're done?
I make a motion, open the public hearing.
Good, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Not opposed, okay.
Okay, if anyone would like to speak, please raise your hand. Um, Mr. Retter, Robert Retter?
Yes.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Uh, Robert Ritter, fourteen, uh, South Devon Avenue, I am the, uh, owner of the adjacent property. Um, the, I, I, I certainly will have plenty of comments down the road, uh, but I did have, um, uh, one, uh, well, one question and one comment. My first question is with respect to, uh, the secret, uh, determination. Um, I'm a little concerned with the proposal, I mean, I, I haven't, I can't do the math, uh, on top of my head in terms of how much, uh, earth they're moving and relocating on the property. But what I am concerned about is that over the last, um, at least over the last three to five years, certainly since the last approval was given, um, the the, the primary use of the property currently is they have numerous landscaping trucks, heavy equipment, machinery stored. Um, I see them changing oil on the property regularly. Um, landscapers come in with full trucks, leave with empty trucks. I have no idea where that fill is coming from, where the, uh, the debris is coming from, where they're storing it, where they're leaving it. Of course, the property is, uh, next door to one of, um, uh, Suez's wells. Um, I'm curious to know if anyone's going to require any environmental soil testing, uh, to determine whether or not there's any contaminants on the property. The, with respect to the rest of the design, I'll hold off on other comments. But Dan, I did have one comment for you, or a question, rather. Um, I couldn't determine whether you guys were saying that the, the prior site plan approval has expired or it is currently in effect, and now they're trying to modify.
Uh, I was, uh, here's what I said, um, it was approved in two thousand eighteen. Um, correct?
Yes.
Uh, it is now two thousand twenty-two. Uh, Suzanne has three years, uh, uh, passed since their approval in two thousand eighteen.
They were in C D R C when they came before, um, us with, during the time that I guess it was expired. It expired November of eighteen, that would be November of twenty twenty-one, correct? And they, yeah, they were already in C D R C. The new owner, new deed, new, et cetera.
So.
Right, but the point is, is that no building permit had been pulled within three years of that approval, so.
That's correct, so it expired, so I, I was pointing out that, um, even if they weren't making a single change, they would, they could apply for a, um, uh, a, a different form of relief. Um, it would be an extension of, uh, their expired approval and it doesn't even require a public hearing.
Right.
Okay.
But that, but that's not what's happening here.
Right.
What's happening?
Right, so it seems to me what they should be doing is.
All right, is this a public hearing or is it a deposition? I mean, is it, you know, this kid can make a statement, but I don't really think that it's appropriate to have a back and forth.
Well, if he's answering my questions, we can go back and forth.
I'll leave it up to Dan if he wants to respond to the. He wants to respond, yes. Yeah, I'm gonna leave up to Dan if he wants to respond, yes. He's earned the right.
Basically, uh, Rob, my conclusion was, uh, that this, this needs, um, amended site plan approval, um, and that, uh, the changes that they're proposing, though, um, certainly, um, uh, I'm not in a position to characterize them, um, but they're characterizing them as minor. Um, still require, um, a revised site plan approval. And since their approval expired, if they apply for revised site plan approval and it's approved, that that starts the clock up again for the three years, it's a new approval.
Right, that I wholeheartedly agree with. My comment then, just will end it from there, is if you have an expired site plan approval, I don't see how you can have an application to amend an expired site plan approval. It seems to me the proper process would be to extend the proper, uh, the prior approval, if in fact that's what the board is inclined to do, and then submit the application to amend a viable and current application.
And what would, what would the utility be of doing that?
Well, it's just kind of like following the process, and that's kind of the thing that I, that annoyed me about the last process. But we, we went down that road before, we don't need to go down it again.
Yeah, no.
But that's the point, right, is that there's a process that should be followed.
This is, this is not the first time that this has happened. I think Amy even pointed out, uh, another example of one, um, Culinary Depot, but there've been many, many others. Um, so if anything, um, that was the process and they're proposing, and, uh, I agree that that's the brought, that they should do what everyone else has had to do.
Well, actually, then what they should do is follow the proper process, if the village hasn't required people to follow the proper process um, in the past, that doesn't mean the village should not require people to follow the proper process now, that's the point.
Yes, well, it, that's, it's, uh, your point, um.
Dan, if I could suggest, maybe, maybe, um, maybe Mr. Ritter can contact you after hours.
Mr. Reed has my cell phone number.
There you go, so, okay.
Fair enough.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Uh, anybody else want to talk, uh, Suzanne?
I don't have anybody else's hand raised, but we have less, a number of people because of the hour, I think. Yeah, I don't see anyone else who's raised their hand.
You're gonna have one less in about a minute.
I'm right behind you.
No, I'm joking, I'm sorry.
Okay. Fine, so if there's nobody else.
If I could summarize, is the agreement that we will return to tack, go to ARB and return next month?
No, C D R C.
I'm sorry, C D R C, I always mix up my tax and C D R Cs.
Okay. See, are you looking? Where?
I'm so sorry Suzanne, you're breaking up on me.
Just point that out.
Even the internet is getting tired. We, you, you didn't come through, we couldn't hear you.
Your internet's tired.
Yeah, it's saying it's unstable, I just got an alert. I said, we already, we, just for the record, we have five applications for the February C D R C.
When is the February C D R C?
February, it's the second Tuesday of every month. So that's February eighth, if you're trying to come to the February twenty-fourth planning.
And when's the ARB?
The ARB is, um, that's the third Tuesday of the month, they would have to apply. No, no, I, uh, hold on, I gotta look at a calendar, I'm sorry, I didn't bring the ARB with me. Um, they would have to apply February first to go to, you're, you are correct, February fifteenth. Uh, if they want to do that before the February twenty-fourth planning board. I'm not saying they can't be on the eighth, I'm just letting all the consultants know that it is, um, full, and Eve, I think you have a conflict with the eighth, if I recall. Hello?
She nodded yes.
Okay.
I'm saying yes.
No, you were frozen on my screen, I think.
Okay, sorry.
That's a, that's a tight timeline anyway.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just pointing all this out, that's all.
Actually, there's really no reason to come back to C D R C, the, the review comments are pretty straightforward. Unless you feel more comfortable doing that, but I don't really see the need personally.
You don't think, you don't think we need to come back?
I mean, I don't know, Valerie, how do you feel about that? Did you have?
No, I don't think they do either, no.
No, I think they're really just, issue, you know, the plans have to be kind of cleaned up a little and reflect the latest architectural plan.
And, and Suzanne, I'm sorry, what's the deadline for the ARB to one?
It's the first, it's the first Tuesday of the month, so that would be February first for the third Tuesday of the month, which would be February fifteenth, yes, at seven P M. And that is the last day of remote meetings, so we can do that by Zoom technically.
Okay, all right, fair enough.
Well, right now, it's, it's that date.
So do you think you'll make it to the, uh, February ARB?
Yes.
Yeah, I think they will as well.
They have four days to submit.
Yeah.
We have, we have the plans.
Oh, you do, okay.
Okay.
I, I'll talk to you tomorrow, there's, there's the ARC checklist, Amy, I don't know if you seen that, okay.
I, I, I think the more compelling issue is. Um. They're obviously not coming in February to black, back here, um.
Why?
Well, right now we have the skill building if they submit, we have Duncan to go over all those items. We have 124 that just continued. So you would be the next one.
But we're easy.
Careful how you say that.
No, I, I, I mean, we're.
I know what you mean.
We, you know, we've been, we've been, this is a prior approval, it's a, it's a reinstatement. Um, but I'll leave that obviously to, um.
Well, either way, if and when we approve a continuance, we should do it to February. Either way, if it doesn't work out, we could always.
Yeah, could always adjourn.
And if the skill builder, you know, the skill building center's not ready. We'll have a.
Then there's.
Free year schedule, so.
Chairman.
Yeah, as long as I think they, you know, they'll, they'll be at the ARB on the 15th, there's no reason we shouldn't see them again on the 24th.
Right.
Okay. Is there anything else from anybody?
Gonna close the public hearing.
Yeah, but, um, are we gonna vote on the, uh. Adopting, that is work, the, uh, the secret neg deck from last time? That's who you wanted tonight?
If you would like to do that tonight, you can do that tonight.
If, if that's what they want, we can, uh, we can talk about that, any reason not to?
I, I don't know, um, this is not my daily work, um. But, uh, I heard talk about, uh, potential additional soil testing. Um. And, um. The change in elevation, even though it may be a positive, um. The, um, obviously turning to my compadres, uh, even thou, um. Do you feel that, uh, um, a reinstatement, uh, is in order? Um. Uh. Based on everything they've heard tonight?
I don't have any concerns for engineering on my end, the soil testing I'm referring to was in my previous approval and was a condition previously. Um, the exploration for bedrock is customary. But if you're referring to, um, Mr. Rita's concern about what's going on currently on the site. I'm not familiar with how the site is currently being utilized, I don't know.
Does that have to do with secret?
Well, I thought that's what the question Dan was asking, that there's other potential soil testing that was just brought up.
No, I, I, I thought I had heard that since the retaining wall had to be higher. And that the elevations were going to be lower, that more soil was going to be taken out. And that, um, there was some discussion about whether. That additional soil would have to be tested.
I didn't say that, no, the soil testing was the comment from Mr. Rita. My inquiry was regarding if they've explored for the depths to bedrock. That's not testing.
I'd like a vote on the seeker on the neg deck. If, there's nothing different, if, if anything, we're improving conditions.
What do you think, Valerie?
So I think this board can vote on the neg doc tonight, if you'd like to, um, we didn't hear anything else contrary. Um, that would cause, uh, us to have to rethink in terms of the thresholds that were set in your original negative declaration.
Thanks. Okay, so, um. That would, um, the wording on that would be, um, to reinstate. The prior negative declaration, uh, issued, um. Uh, for.
I have it, um, it was on, uh, July 29th, 2016.
Uh, with regard to 10 South Devon Avenue LLC. Um, address 10 South Devon Avenue, uh, in the Village of Vermont.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Um. Can I ask that, uh, anyone, any member who raised their hand. Uh, unmute themselves and, uh, voice their vote?
Aye.
Thank you, Mortify?
Aye.
Thank you. Five, nothing. The record.
Okay. Okay, the next thing is a motion to continue the public hearing till, uh, till February 24th. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, so make a motion to continue the public hearing for 10 South Devon to February 24th. A planning board meeting, which will be held at 7:00 PM via Zoom or 7:30 PM in person at the village hall.
I'll second.
Depending on, uh, the, uh, um. Uh. Legislation, uh, um, adopted by, uh, New York State. Existing at that time.
Okay. So I make the motion?
Second.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Now I need a motion to close the meeting.
Any new business?
Uh.
I think we discussed the, uh, public here, the, um, in-person versus Zoom thing already, right?
Yeah, we.
It was with, um, Sue has water, who did they sue?
Oh. Don't worry, ZBA.
Oh, the ZBA, I feel good already.
They, they sued us also, didn't they?
No. Not, uh.
No, you gotta look at that.
Yeah, it said planning board also.
Yeah, there's one for each.
Uh, okay.
No, there's one for each, that's why I send everything to both of them.
Why would they do the planning board? Okay.
Okay, we've got the best legal representation.
Yes.
You gotta look at your emails.
I read it.
Oh, you did.
Yeah, that's how I knew about it.
Oh, that's right, okay.
Well, I'm kind of used to it, so.
I had won the last one in two months. From the time we were sued.
What is the ZBA holding it up, is that what's going on?
No, we're not talking about this right now.
No, this is not for a public.
Yeah, not, not a public, all right, I'm, all right, guys, good night, everybody, thank you very much.
Okay, I make the motion to close tonight.
Okay, I need a second.
I'll second.
Thank you, all right, all in favor?
Everyone.
Good night, everybody, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.